Okay, it looks like it's 6:30. And this is a public hearing regarding a crisis responder team pilot program. First, let me read the information regarding Zoom meetings pursuant to the gubernatorial disaster proclamation and the declaration of emergency for the city of Urbana, Illinois, related to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with changes to the Open Meetings Act, Public Act PA 101-0640. It has been determined that an in-person meeting, public meeting is not prudent for safe or safe at this time. Members of the public body will attend remotely using Zoom webinar. Members of the public may attend via Zoom or via meetings remotely at Urbana Public Television through Comcast Xfinity on channels six and 1096, I3 broadband on channel six, AT&amp;T U-verse on channel 99, and streamed on the web. Public notice of, notice of public hearing regarding a crisis co-responder team pilot program. Notice is hereby given that the committee of the whole of the city of Urbana, Illinois will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 4th, 2021 at 6:30 PM via Zoom. The public hearing will, will present and receive feedback on the city's crisis co-responder team, CCRT Pilot Program, being implemented in partnership with Rosecrans. In 2004, the Urbana Police Department began training officers to more fully equip them to handle calls for service that involved subjects experiencing a behavioral or mental health crisis. Those trained were part of the Crisis Intervention Team, or CIT. In 2020, the department handled about 800 calls for service that involved a mental health component. While the department has continued to maintain its CIT program, it has become apparent that the city needs to do more. The Urbana Police Department, along with Rosecrans, is planning to implement a CCRT follow-up model to deliver linkages to services for those experiencing a behavioral or mental health crisis in Urbana. This model will combine one Urbana police officer with one Rosecrans clinician. The police officer assigned to this unit will be a behavioral health detective. That officer has received special training in addition to being a CIT officer. The CCRT will focus its efforts on providing linkages to services to affected subjects and will do so on a following basis. This team will also coordinate with the family and support systems of both subjects to provide services and guidance to them as well. We are interested in hearing from members of the public to help shape the implementation of this one-year pilot program. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Ms. Wu?
Here. Fellas, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item is a presentation, and I think we're getting that from Chief Seraphin regarding this program.
I think the mayor is going to start off.
Okay.
Just to introduce very quickly, as you heard in the description of the program, the city of Urbana has long been involved and seeking ways to help people experiencing mental health or behavioral health crises, beginning back in 2004. We recognize the need for, for that. And over the years, people have worked very hard to respond to the needs of the public. But as noted, we, we need to do more to better serve the people of Urbana. So I'm really proud that we have reached this moment in our community. It's not, it didn't happen overnight. This is the result of a great deal of planning. I want to recognize the efforts of Chief Bryant Seraphin, Deputy Chief Rich Searls, Deputy, their city administrator Carol Mitten, former Lieutenant Joel Sanders, who was really a leader in our community for many years in this effort, Lieutenant Coker, Officer Paige Bennett, and Carleen Cardosi from Rosecrans and her team for helping us reach this moment. I'm really proud of, of the program we've put together, and you'll be learning more about that shortly. Thank you.
And if I could just say a word before we get into the substance of it. Just want to remind everyone that the council expressed its desire through the, when we passed the budget, that, and I'm going to quote this from the, from the ordinance, that no resources, monetary or otherwise, related to this or any part of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget shall be applied to alternative, alternate response models, including co-responder models without a public hearing and consultation with the council. So that consultation took place in late July. We had Rich Searls and I met with each of the council members individually, and, and we got, we got support from almost everyone to at least pursue this pilot program. People had desires for us to do, to go beyond this pilot and so forth. But it was on the strength of those consultations that we're moving forward. And then tonight is satisfying the, the council's desire that we have a public hearing before we commence the program. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bryant. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So as was read in the notice of a public hearing, Urbana began with crisis intervention team officers back in 2004. And I think that's important because as we are in the 17th year of having, of having those, those officers, I, I do think that shows our willingness to, to move forward and go beyond what we had done for the first 10 years of my career here, which wasn't having any CIT officers. I wanted to point out that the CIT Steering Committee has been around since October of 2012. I wouldn't have known that except we had to ask Joel Sanders that from his home in Iowa to make sure that we knew exactly what was, we got this date right. And I think that's important because that's been for nine years, almost nine years at least. We've had a multidisciplinary group of people who have met and talked about some of these issues, these mental and behavioral health crises. And I wanted to just kind of give a quick rundown to make sure that everybody understood how long and the different groups that people have had at the table. We've had law enforcement, medical personnel, local corrections people, Rosecrans, Champaign County Mental Health Board. We've had municipal representatives. We've had township representatives, state's attorney's office, the CU Autism Network, Regional Planning Commission, and then even further interested parties like Courage Connection, Salt and Light, and of course, the University of Illinois. So these, all of these entities have met and, and talked about these issues over the course of time. It was actually as, as part of this group that the one-door concept was, was born. And I wanted to at least mention that because I know a lot of people had, had heard that. As a matter of fact, it was a multidisciplinary thing that involved all these agencies, including multiple police agencies. But Urbana was picked initially as the agency that was going to pilot it. A little bit smaller, a little bit easier, perhaps to try something new. And as already been said, Lieutenant Sanders was the principal driver, and he was here. And so we were selected. But it was a big idea and had a lot of different components involved in that. And indeed, when Lieutenant Sanders retired, that left a void for us. And different agencies were trying to examine different ways that they wanted to move forward in this arena. Remember, there's a national conversation going on at the same time with regards to what police do, how they do it, what should we be involved in? And so on February 3rd, I attended a webinar Rosecrans had sponsored with Rockford and Winnebago County law enforcement officials there. And on that night, I heard about this particular model. And that is when we began to have further conversations about maybe this model, this follow-up model, teaming a Rosecrans person with a Urbana police person would be something that we could do. So we had staff conversations in April. There were two community conversations that were hosted by Rosecrans, and Carl was a part of those, talking about what people would like to see. At, at the end of the day, we felt this was something that we could get accomplished, that we could afford, and that we could manage. So I just wanted to set that stage tonight. I believe Lieutenant Corey Coker of the Urbana Police, and Carleen Cardosi will actually provide more of the meat. But I just wanted again to set that historical context for you all tonight. And Lieutenant Coker will let you move ahead, sir.
Thank you, chief. Good evening, council and mayor. A crisis co-response team exists in Winnebago County with assistance from Rosecrans. It currently staffed with clinicians from Rosecrans and including law enforcement officers from three agencies, the Rockford Police Department, the Winnebago County Sheriff's Office in Love Park PD. And we obviously just adopted the same moniker based on the collaboration with Rosecrans. Basically, a behavioral health detective and clinician from Rosecrans would team up and provide individuals with links to various services, including mental health, substance abuse, and programs for housing if individuals are homeless. More and more agencies are implementing co-responder models to assist individuals who are in need of assistance. Currently, one in five adults in the United States experience mental illness each year. Chief touched base on this earlier, that currently there are about 2,700 units of CIT programs in the United States, while not necessarily co-responder model. It's excellent training, it's good experience, and they are very much a precursor to a co-responder model. The Urbana Police Department currently has 29 CIT certified officers on the roster. The CCRT would conduct outreach with individuals who have had contact with Urbana Police Department to inquire if they'd like to take part on a voluntary basis with the primary goal of providing services to individuals and improving community and police relations. Here are some of the benefits, including reuniting former clients of Rosecrans, as there is some overlap and speaking with clinicians, individuals they may not have had conversations with or missed appointments, we may have had, actually had contact with. One of the more important benefits is community stabilization. Let me talk about that real quick. It's very important to help reduce jail admissions and expensive hospital, hospitalizations. So the individuals accepting the assistance would be a little bit more comfortable with their own support system in, in the confines of their home. The BHD detective and clinician would have the ability to spend more time with individuals to come up with a plan that suits their needs. The patrol division currently doesn't have this luxury based on the calls for service. Some of the consumer benefit to note, after a police officer, after a patrol officer has a contact with an individual and records it as a CIT event, that report is generated and that would be routed to the CCRT for follow-up the next day, if that's practicable, practicable. This gives the CCRT time to research previous calls of service for the individual and possibly reach out to family members regarding their history and what services they had been previously supplied. Follow-up response with the clinician and detective can take place at their home or wherever the individual was most comfortable. The detective will not be in full uniform, but still be easily identified as a police officer. And by having assessments via the follow-up model, I think that will reduce costly office visits and transportation issues as well. I selected Officer Paige Bennett as the behavioral health detective. She is a four-year veteran of the Urbana Police Department. She is CIT certified, including attending her bachelor, bachelor's science in social work and master's social work from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign with a concentration on mental health. She's currently assigned to Patrol Division, and she is one of our hostage and crisis negotiators. She has previous experience prior to the Urbana Police Department with crisis assessments and juvenile case management. As a crisis responder, she responded to homes and surrounding counties in a very large district to implement safety plans or other treatments such as counseling and hospitalization. And currently, she's working towards her licensed clinical social worker certification. Here I have some statistics provided by Melissa Hindrian. These are CIT contacts by month. As you can see, this is going through to September the 20th of this year. We are currently averaging roughly just south of 55 contacts per month. These are natures of the incidents. These are calls for service. These are what people have called 9114 in regards to some of the behavior that they witness on the street or in the house. But they're not limited to exact here, so it won't add up to 100%. But because officers have the ability, if they respond to a disruptive behavior call, disorderly conduct call, and they get there and they find out it's due also to public intoxication, then they have the ability to check that as well. Here are the outcomes out of 493 CIT contacts through September 20th. 63% were resolved at the scene by the officer. 20% required an involuntary petition, meaning we transported an individual to a medical facility so they could receive treatment. 8% was a referral, 8% was on arrest, and 1% was a notice to appear. And I think if we, if implemented correctly, we'd be able to lower the arrest percentage, lower the petition percentage, and increase the referral and also increase maybe the resolve at scene based on the situation. These are all individuals in CIT contacts for this year. There were 294 individuals. These are the demograph, demographics of it, of the data. 49% black, 46% white, 3% were Hispanic, and 2% were Asian. Females represented a 47% and males 53%. This graph indicates repeat CIT individuals. So for example, if you look to your left, individuals with five plus CIT contacts, it's 47% or 77 individuals. These are individuals that have had contact with Champaign, Champaign County law enforcement officers, Rantoul Police, University Police, Urbana CPD, or ULI Police Department. And the red indicates individuals with less than five represent 217. So the goal is to provide some attention to the 77 individuals so that we can properly get some treatment if they're be interested in doing so in order to help them manage their life and provide them with some services, okay? I think I'm going to turn it over to Carleen Cardosi of the Rose, of Rosecrans. I guess, Carleen, I'll just go ahead and go through the slides for you if you want to.
Okay, that sounds great. Hi, everyone. I am Carleen. I am the regional president for Rosecrans, so I oversee all of the programming that we do in the state of Illinois. A little bit about the next few slides. We did present and were approved at the National Co-Responder Conference this last year. It was the second annual one. At that conference, there's obviously the group of people who do all of the first response. And then there was a handful of us who do the follow-up model as well. I have some up-to-date numbers as we just did do our reporting to the mental health board. A little bit about the onset that we did in Winnebago County. Similar to Champaign, there had been a lot of talk about the need. Nobody knew where to get funding for a program like this. This was not a program that Rosecrans was able to sustain. It is not a billable program or a program that's recognized by the state of Illinois as something that we could do and bill services. After a summer of absolute social distress and unrest, we at Rosecrans said, that's it, we're doing something. And we are giving to staff, police and sheriff did the same thing and said, this is our bottom line, we have to do something different. During that time, we did start applying for grants. It was one of those things where like, we don't want to start something and not be able to fund it long-term. So during that time, we did get funding from the Winnebago Mental Health Board to give an understanding of what that looks like. They do help with the funding on the law enforcement side, and they do fund clinicians, two clinicians, for 16 hours a day, seven days a week. That accounted to, let's count about $3.5 million. So starting a full-range co-responder program seven days a week, increasing the contact, being able to go out on more active calls is something that now the Champaign, I mean, I'm sorry, the Winnebago model is working towards. During this time period, Rosecrans also did apply for some federal grants to become a CC-BHC model. During that model, which really the model is about collaboration, making sure that we are linking all services together sort of as a hub and a system of care. When we wrote our grant for Champaign County, we did include this crisis co-response model as Chief and Lieutenant talked about. We have all been at tables, but the funding for these programs are very hard to come by. We were lucky enough to receive this grant and funding. And so the positions at Rosecrans, some of the ability to do the data collection, the flyers, the cards, how we're going to do the follow-up model, the starting of new programs on the Rosecrans side to ensure that we can do better, to be honest, and more efficient follow-up, has been funded through this grant. We did receive $4 million over the next two years while we learned how to build the programming down here in Champaign to meet the need. So just a little bit so that you have the full sort of understanding of where we're at. So in the Winnebago area, as you can see from November 20th, when our, when we started, and I'll give the most recent, as I said, which was September 1st, we had 1,138 dispositions. So that is actual documented calls that we went out on. During that time, 75% of them, we were able to link to services. We do have the ability to break them down. Majority of them were referred from mental health services, about 12% for substance abuse. The really interesting piece of this, over all of those dispositions, only 21 of them ended up being arrested and going to jail. We did have 36 people who were actually in need of medical care and were able to get the medical care they needed. And then we worked with our crisis co-response, I mean, our mobile crisis response team on doing some evaluations for those that were in risk of harming themselves or others to make sure that we could keep them safe in a hospital setting. One of the things that we have seen in this program, that people have the ability to not want to do it. So out of the 1,138, we have had 147 people who have passed on any linkages to services. When I talk about lessons learned, this is a really hard one for the community. When we're there offering help, finding funding for psychiatry and medication, and people do have the right to not want to do that. And so that is one of those things that we are continuing working on. So the question I'm sure that many have, and we are, have been asked a lot of time, is why follow-up? First of all, it's a starting spot. It is time to start. It is time to meet the need, as you guys were just talking about, having conversations since 2004, I think they said. It's time to do something. It also represents safety. And for us to understand the community, it takes a lot of trust on the law enforcement side to want to go out with a social worker. And on the social worker side, it also is about building trust in a relationship with law enforcement as well. We have seen through this pilot program the need of the community and the response time. As I said, when we were at the national conference, some of the agencies that just do going out on the crisis said, we see the same people over and over again because nobody's out there doing follow-up. So while they might be responding to crisis, there's not a follow-up team to get that done. The other question really is, if we don't start somewhere, then how are we going to help the citizens who continue to need the help? This, I want to just be really clear, this is a starting spot. In Winnebago, as I said, we are doing more of the calls with some of the familiar faces. As Lieutenant just said, there's 77 identified people that we will start to case manage and reach out to. And now in the Winnebago area, if there is John Smith who happens to be, you know, in his front yard having a problem, they will now call the co-response team to go out and meet with John Smith. But it does take some trust in the community for us to be able to do some active calls as well. So the training that took place, our first round of training, to be honest with you, we did a lot internally, some with NAMI, some with some local agencies. But we were lucky enough to really build some relationships in Champaign County where we were able to attend the classes at the University of Illinois Police Training Institute. So the person that we hired is also a clinical licensed social worker. She came to us from a local hospital where she did crisis and really was interested in this community model. So during this time, they were able to learn de-escalation skills, how to evaluate, how to do proper documentation, because we do have sort of two different roles of documentation here. We have the mental health side, which is that Rosecrans piece and all of the HIPAA laws that go with it, and then also the law enforcement side to make sure that we're respecting all of the citizens and client rights, and then confidentiality and any ethical issues that we could get into as well. So some of the lessons that we have done since we are going on a year, which is hard to believe of this program, is to make sure that we're on the same page with all of the agencies, making sure that we know where to refer people. Is there a certain person that we can contact if we do have a crisis co-responder? What do they need for us to ensure safety and good clinical care? So these will be ongoing meetings. Currently in Winnebago, we do meet once a month with all of the community agencies just to talk about how are these systems of care going? What could we improve on? Where have we seen any maybe glitches or gaps in our system? And then how will we continue to meet those needs? Making sure that you pick the right team members. You know, people think it's going to be maybe a walk in the park, or we joked around initially saying, you know, they think they're going to run in with bad boys playing in the background. That's not what it really looks like all the time when you go on a mental health call. So making sure that we have people who are trained in crisis. Making sure that we have people on both sides who understand where law enforcement is coming from and also where the clinician is coming from, and making sure that we have good communication of staffing up cases. So just, I, we have been thrilled with the teamwork of Urbana Police and really the way in which they have chosen the officer has, has been really outstanding in comparison to some of the other routes that we have gone. Realizing that everyone's going to be happy. Again, this is probably the biggest one that we hear all the time as well. Can you give us a date when you're start, when you're going to go on active calls? You know, I don't know how many times I've been asked if I've heard of the Kahoots model. I have. It's also 30 years in the making. And so what we see now in the Kahoots model is not how the Kahoots model initially began. And so being able to explain where our starting spot is, including the community council members, about where we want to go and how we're going to get there, has been a big lesson for us in making sure that we're communicating accurately on all of those steps. And as I said, not everyone wants help. It has been a really hard lesson. You know, there might be some community members that you can't wait for them to go out and try to link to services, but they might not choose the service. That does not mean that we will not continue to go out and help or we will not continue to go out and try and meet that need. Some of the award that we got through this grant is creating more community services where our licensed clinicians will go into the community and meet with people. We did get funding to start an assertive community team, which means that we would have a team that has substance abuse counselors, vocational counselors, a nurse, and a clinician that work 60% in the community. So for even those people who are like, nope, I don't trust Rosecrans, I don't trust the doctor, I don't trust the psychiatrist, we still will have the team of people that will be able to try to engage them. And then being flexible in our approach. You know, everybody is different. What you think you know, you only know for that one call or for that one client. Knowing that the pilot program that we started in Winnebago is not going to run the same way as the pilot program that we want to start in Urbana. It's a very different community with different community needs. And so what it did for us is it gave us sort of the railroad tracks or the building blocks to start, but knowing that we will be flexible in our approach, both with the community and the citizens that were going on the calls to help. And now I know that we are going to open this up for questions that you guys might have regarding the program or the roles that law enforcement and Rosecrans will play together.
Mary Alice, sorry, I was muted.
That's okay, no problem. Thank you very much, Carleen. I appreciate it. My, my basic question is this, why, what is the benefit to having the police and the social workers working together? So I guess my question is, have you seen a model work in which the police refer directly to a social worker rather than going out as a team?
For us, it's really been about safety because everyone calls 911 and we wouldn't know the situation that we would be going into. We, the police do refer to us for mobile crisis response. I don't know how many people are familiar with it. It used to be called SAS. So right now, if the police officers have contact with a citizen that is suicidal, homicidal, in need of an assessment, they contact us now and we go out and do those emergency situations to help decide if hospitalization is needed or we could link them to services. We have not had, not saying that it couldn't happen. We have not had negative feedback from any of the citizens in our other pilot program with the police being involved. Obviously, they have made it sound like they have their own private police officers, which is really interesting because we have a, a larger population of some transient people. And now they call it their officer, and they call for two. And now they call it their officer and they call for shoes and food and all sorts of things. But what it's doing is it's not taking the time of 911, the dispatch, the cost of sending people out and sort of having this teamwork with them.
So just so I'm clear, you had mentioned that you already received kind of emergency referrals in, from Urbana?
I don't know if Cory can speak to the way in which you guys refer to mobile crisis response at this time. I know how Rosecrans receives the calls, but I'm not sure how.
Sure. So currently, right before I got off the road as a sergeant, if we encountered a situation where we felt we needed to contact Rosecrans, we would call Rosecrans. But sometimes it would, based on their schedule, it would depend if they got there fifteen minutes or thirty minutes and we really had to kind of juggle the situation and try to get down to the root cause of what we could do at the time. But to your question, that's typically what officers would do if no CIT officer was available or if they got to a situation where they wanted a little bit more advice.
Okay, alright. I'll let others ask questions before I ask more. Thank you.
Jaya?
I want to follow up on that one first because if we're talking about a follow-up model, how does the 911 answer apply? Because you're going in after, we're not talking about like a emergent crisis situation.
Those are two different lines of service. So, one line of service is mobile crisis response. And so the police would be going out to whatever that call is.
But that's not this model. That's why I'm asking that clarification because we're not talking about a co-responder model that's actually at the time, we're talking about a follow-up model. So I was hoping you could answer Mary Alice's question related to this model.
This model, we are doing follow-up solely based on the safety at this time for the Rosecrans staff and for law enforcement. We do not have it fully staffed or a system in place where we would be comfortable sending clients out to any, I mean, staff out to any 911 call. I think what happens is people call 911 and it is then up to the dispatcher to decide who gets called out. At this time, we don't have that software in a dispatch system that's going to be.
I understand that, and I appreciate that. I guess, my point was, we're talking about follow-up, we're not talking about 911s. The question was, why send a police officer for follow-up? If I'm.
Because that still doesn't mean that we know what we're going to be walking into when there is a crisis that has taken place. We are following up on the 911 calls that took place. And so the model that we have chosen as the pilot program was using a law enforcement officer and a social worker to go out.
Right. So quite frankly, that's one of the reasons a lot of community members, including other mental health professionals, move on this problematic is because it's assuming that the individuals are working with who are inherently dangerous. So that's important clarification. The other question I had is, why this model for Urbana? You're talking about it in another county. What evidence do you have that it'll work here?
So, I think I, Jaya, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Sorry, my internet's spotty.
I thought I had a little bit of locking up here or whatnot. So, part of, one of the reasons why this particular model was because we had looked and had had a lot of discussions about very big programs, like, like I said, like One Door initially. Big, heavy list that we, as I watched, I wasn't actively involved in those specifically, but they were very hard to sort of get the requisite amount of people, staff, of resources, of places, different organizations. And so when we heard this, we knew that Rosecrans was the provider in our particular area. And so we reached out to them to kind of say, "Can we have some more discussion about what are you doing there? Can we at least get something, something started?" And I'll tell with regards to the question you just asked before, because I've been able to speak with a couple of different social workers, including those at U of I, and some of their, what they're trying to do. And we had talked about the idea of having police, to your point, having police go along. And is, why is this? And some, and what I heard from a couple of the social workers was indeed, they were, they were used to having people come to an office environment. They were used to having people come to them. And going out was slightly different. And they, at least initially, here wanted, enjoyed having the partnership. So, I think there's an extra staffing. Again, we have one Rosecrans clinician, so we sort of double that staff with our, with our person. And then I think there is a component of this, so there is a bit of a safety issue with regards to going out and trying, in different places and all over town. And I think it was just that, that simple.
Okay, Chris?
Thank you. So, this is for Lieutenant Coker and the chief. And this may be a very impractical question, but just thinking out of ideas here. Is it possible that the police officer going along with, on the call could hide their weapons more? As a way of de-escalation?
So, I don't know that we've exactly narrowed down the exact uniform of the day. We've, I know that we had chosen what we'd call a soft uniform where something more like a polo shirt, like I would wear, with some insignia and some khakis, something more along the lines of that. I don't know. And with regards to the exposed versus a not-exposed weapon, I think we like having them have the tools that they need when they need them. But, but again, that's why we're having some of this feedback tonight to kind of feel where are people at with regards to those issues and what others are doing? What are they, you know, how does Winnebago County exactly dress? What are they, what are they doing? And so there's, I guess there's some room for more discussion on that.
Lieutenant Coker, do you have any thoughts about that?
No, sir. Just like I said, I mentioned that they would be a little bit more in a softer clothes type of uniform. Wouldn't look as like a patrol officer. That was going for a little bit more of a comfortability, an easy, easy way to talk to individuals who might be in crisis or who may want to receive some services.
Okay. Is this 24 hours?
Actually, no. The hours of work will be 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. We utilize the data for calls for service that we had in the afternoon time, after about two or three in the afternoon, calls, CIT contacts started to have a little bit more uptick. But we also wanted to be able to maintain the ability to contact providers that provide service. So that's the reason why we chose those hours.
Thank you.
Shandra?
Okay. So, so you talked about referrals. Is that a warm handoff? Are you just giving the people phone numbers when you're following up? And if it's a referral or a warm handoff, like is insurance needed? Are their services going to be covered? What if they don't have insurance? I'm looking at all those questions.
No, it would be a warm handoff. We are not handing off a phone number. Obviously, that has not worked necessarily for some of the citizens in the past. So part of this role is doing some of the case management to make sure that we have the warm handoff. We can also help people get Medicaid if they do not have that, any type of insurance. At Rosecrans, we also conserve those that have no funding, including psychiatry. We have been working also with Promise Health and their new executive director on how we can link services there as well for the physical health aspect, as that plays a huge role. So our goal would be that we do warm handoffs and we continue to build the community partnership. It was hard though, to be honest with you, last spring, when we started holding these listening sessions, it was hard for people to want to say, "Yes, we will, we will take some people that might not have funding or we will take Medicaid."
Anything else, Shandra?
Yes. So, as a follow-up to that, we have like a waitlist, very long waitlist in our community for mental health services. How are these people going to be able to slide right in? What, what's that aspect look like?
As I said, we did receive quite a bit of funding to grow our own mental health services. So, right now, we have started up a community support team. We have started up an ACT team, both of those are in the community. We have hired two more access counselors so that people have easier access to care and hired on four more mental health clinicians. While I know that does not take away all waitlists, I'm not pretending it. Oh, and a full-time psychiatrist. It will help us be able to make referrals easier and serve more.
Okay, I have more questions, but I'll let others.
Okay, Jaya?
I think I'm supposed to let Grace go first because she hasn't asked a question?
Well, if that's what you want to do. You had your hand up first, so that's why I was.
I did, but I've had a chance. I've got more questions, but I love to give Grace a chance too. Okeydoke.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just also wanted to start out saying thanks for the presentation and having the public hearing. I do appreciate sharing that and having a little chance for input. And I would like even more, you know, it seems like we had individual conversations, not on an open meeting. And we have this public hearing, which I think is a good, good thing. But there's also not much time to process, you know, for the public. There wasn't much information given ahead of time, even for us. It's kind of a lot to process if this is the only chance for public input. So my one question was, what is the process next? Is there an official approval process for this project, especially with that budget ordinance? So that was my one question for now.
We view that what we've done up to this point will satisfy what was in the budget ordinance, as you had indicated, were going to be the gates that we had to go through. I think this, you know, this is a pilot. There's going to be, you know, we're interested in hearing feedback from folks. We are, you know, we're going to be, it's going to be, there's an organic quality to it, I would say, because we're going, as Carleen was describing, they're going to learn our community and, and they're going to learn what the, what the team is comfortable with. And then, you know, we'll, I expect that at some point, they'll report back about the progress and we'll decide, you know, if it, if we need to adjust. But we're very interested in responding to the desires of the broader community to do something different. And the fact that Rosecrans has this grant opportunity and is a very willing partner with us is an opportunity that we just don't want to, we don't want to miss and we don't want to delay any further.
Yes, understanding that. I do think that a vote would be appropriate, though. When we've talked about approval in the past, especially just doing the code update, I thought we made it very clear on the record that approval from council meant a vote, not talking to individual council members in a vague conversation and getting, you know, like an initial thought. I do think that a vote would mean approval in the context that we've defined in the past. So something to think about. And on the same line of thought, Chief Seraphin said that, you know, there's room for more discussion on the plan as far as like the uniform and things. So I was wondering when that further discussion and input would take place.
Those are internal discussions. Those are, those were operational decisions that will be made by the, by the subject matter experts. And we're here tonight to get people's feedback on ideas. You know, we heard from Councilmember Evans, is there some way to have more of a concealed weapon as opposed to a weapon that someone could see because it might be triggering? Okay, take that into consideration. I know that I've been doing a lot of reading myself. I had asked the, I had asked the chief about whether a marked car would be used or an unmarked car would be used because I've read that that's an issue for people because they can be, they could feel embarrassed by the fact that the police had come to their house, so they'll be using an unmarked car. So it's those kinds of things that we're interested in hearing from the public. Well, you know, and we'll, and we'll get feedback from the, from the people that get served and then take that into consideration as the, as the program grows.
Okay, Jaya?
I think my next question is both for folks from Rosecrans side and from the city's side. I am not clear how increasing police involvement is responsive to the protests that were asking for more police accountability from last summer. So if you could explain to me how increasing police involvement is responsive to that, that request or demand for accountability and change?
We don't view this as increasing police involvement. We, we view this as an increasing provider involvement and the provider that, who is the partner that's available to us and, and all the reading I've been doing has a partnership with police and their, and, and social workers in a whole variety of formats. But the co-responder model is pairing police and, and, you know, service providers together. And so, it, people are going to be encountering the police, unfortunately anyway. And the idea behind this is if you, if you go to the people who have had repeated contacts with the police and you start to connect them to services, that you will eventually minimize their contacts with the police overall. The referrals are to try to get them help so that they, they aren't in crisis and, and no one is calling the police. They're getting the assistance that they need. That, that's how we view it.
Diane?
To add to that, the officer who is going to be serving in the behavioral health role is a patrol officer currently. She will be reassigned to this position. So that is a reallocation of resources. She's also highly trained and educated as a social worker as well. So, I think this paid Officer Bennett will be an excellent addition to this team and this is a reallocation of resources, which is also what we heard a lot about last year.
Okay, Shandra?
So you mentioned feedback. So what does evaluation look like? How do you get that feedback? What metrics are you looking at? What determines a successful follow-up? How many times are you following up with an individual?
Those are some of the things that we will be building based off of this community. So I can say what we're currently doing. We follow up up to five times without any contact before we say that they, we are unable to locate them. I would be happy to send to the council, we do have door hangers that are made saying that we've come to visit you. It does say Crisis Co-Response Team. It has their cell phone number on it. It also has a list of community services that range from food pantries, domestic violence, shelter, emergency numbers that could be helpful to them as well. Then with regards to the survey, we can base that off of some of the feedback from the council or the community and what they would find important for citizens to feel like they got the treatment that they needed. Both treatment linkage to services and the treatment as a human being if they came in contact with a police officer, law enforcement, Rosecrans during a crisis. Currently, that is all collected into an electronic system where we have the ability to run reports as often as we want. We had talked about it right now, we run a monthly in Winnebago. We ran them much more frequently when we started the program just so we had the ability to sort of see what the calls looked like, what was some of the demographics of who the calls, you know, who we were dealing with, how well we were linking to services. We also then did that in the community as well, making sure that they felt that we were good community partners with referring and being sort of honest about the people that we were also trying to get linked to services or housing.
You're muted.
So you, you said the reports could be monthly or more frequently in the beginning. Have you all decided how often the reports would be compiled and what the distribution of those reports would be like? Would city council be able to be updated as to how the program is going and what, you know, the successful successes are like?
Sure, I'd be happy to report back how recently fit sixty days or thirty days or sixty days of reports. That suffice?
I guess whatever, whatever the city would decide on, you know, again, for us, it's based differently in the other area because of a funder. They want to see our numbers quite frequently to make sure that we are being wise with the financials that they've given us. So we have the ability to do thirty days, sixty days. We have printed our results in Winnebago, in county reports, in the newspapers, wherever people feel like they would like to see it. We are more than happy with being transparent with those.
I mean, a memo once a month to council would be, I think, would be good.
Okay, we can put that down.
Okay, Grace?
Thank you. I will just reiterate again that I really do think we need a vote on this to count as approval. I know that, you know, the administration might want to get it passed because they see it as a good idea and that's fine. And I don't even. And I don't even necessarily disagree with that. But I think we need a vote if this is going to be considered approval in lieu of the budget ordinance that's in place. So I want to reiterate that. And then my question was, if we have a system in place where police are contacting Rosecrance for real life calls in real time, why not kind of have that system? Like, why not vamp up that system or also vamp up that one? In addition to or instead of the follow-up?
Well, actually, when, when we would contact Rosecrance, it would actually be very sporadic. We wouldn't necessarily need them for two or three weeks based on the calls of service that we were responding to. It may be that one situation where an officer wasn't sure the supervisor would arrive. And then we would both make a determination to call Rosecrance. So it was really more of a sporadic issue.
And so this one would be ten AM to six PM, like every day or Monday through Friday, you're saying to catch office hours kind of?
Yeah, it'd be Monday through Friday. So basically, the premise of it would, if, if the night shift goes to a potential suicidal subject and they go and ultimately have to do a petition because they, they, they found that the person was harming themselves, for example, they would go to a medical facility to receive treatment. And then the CCRT team within a few days can follow up to locate where that person is to see if they had arranged for any services, service providers to, to prolong their situation or if they may need some extra attention to go that direction.
Okay, Jaya.
I was hoping to get some clarification on why the decision to move forward with this was made rather than moving forward with the analysis of public safety needs, which is what the, the council actually allocated resources for in this budget. Because I would agree with what Grace shared, that what, that little Zoom conversation we had, I would not consider a consultation and certainly wouldn't consider it in, in keeping, at least with the spirit, if not the actuality of what was put into the budget ordinance.
Well, we, we differ on that then. We feel that we have, that we have met the spirit of what you intended. It's a non-binding section of the, of the budget ordinance. We, we were trying to be respectful of your intention. The co-responder model was called out specifically separately because I think you understood that that was something that we were interested in pursuing. And we're, as I said, we're interested in doing something rather than doing nothing because it's going to take time to have this conversation about reimagining public safety. So here, here we have this opportunity to do something with money that is largely coming from other sources. We're reallocating an incredibly talented officer in this area to try something different. And I'm sorry that you all don't seem to be interested in doing that, but that, that is what we intend to do. Shandra.
Okay, so you, you showed in your slides the sort of demographic breakdown of the people who would fall into, you know, using this, this service or program. What, demographics are important when you're approaching people. How, how cultural sensitivity can you explain to me how that would work if, you know, just if you're encountering, say, a, a black person and two, you know, white people come up, it's, yes, just I, I'm interested to seeing how, you know, the officer and/or the social worker have been, you know, responsibly trained in cultural sensitivity and being able to talk with people of other backgrounds.
Well, knowing Officer Bennett, I know the training she's received at the University Police Training Institute and also in-house training as well. She's very well versed in de-escalation and non-escalation. That's proven based on her role as a crisis and hostage negotiator. Otherwise, she wouldn't have that role. So she's very easy, easily approachable. She's friendly and she treats people with human respect, just like everyone would want to be treated.
On the Rosecrance side, we have internal and external diversity and equity trainings that take place quarterly. It's actually a requirement for us to be able to have the money for the CC BHC grant and also through all of our accreditation. So we have ongoing, like I said, both internal and external trainings that take place.
Grace.
Uh, thank you. Just still wanted to go back to the point. I feel it's, whoo. So I think this is procedural point on voting. I don't appreciate having, you know, opinions put on us, you know, being sorry that we don't agree with it. Just because we want to follow the agreed-upon procedure doesn't mean that we're against it. I think that, you know, we need to let the council vote on it and not just assume our vote will be against it. And for that reason, say that it's not appropriate to vote and differing that you think you have our approval, even if some of us are saying that we did not see that as giving approval. And we've had conversations on the record of precedent doing the ordinance about what council approval and consent means. And we clarified that that meant the vote on the record, not conversations with individual council members without all the information months prior. So I think that we need to have faith in that. I'm not even necessarily against this. I want more transparency and input. And I want to follow the procedures that we have in place. That's not to say that I'm against the whole thing. So that's all I have to say on that. Thanks.
Mary.
Main reason we're moving forward on this is the desire to do something to better serve the public. There's no additional resources required. It's a reallocation of resources. And that's exactly what the community was telling us months and months last year, particularly reallocation of police resources. There's a great need and, and we're seeing, I think, a higher stress level in this community after eighteen months of a pandemic than I've ever seen before. Just, and, and this is completely unprofessional anecdotal, but just based on the calls that are coming into my office from people needing help. This is an opportunity for us to help people now. I mean, we can get this started and we will get this started this month. We can do better than we're doing. We can do more than we're doing. It's not mutually exclusive to the overall evaluation of public safety. That is a larger picture. It's a look at the big picture, but this is a, a step forward to better serving the people. And, and why wouldn't we do this at this point? And typically, votes are taken when it requires a expenditure of funds that's not budgeted. It, it's, and this, this was based on, I wasn't in the conversations this summer, but I know that people genuinely believed that, that the consultations they had with individual council members indicated you were supportive of this. And so on that basis, we went ahead with, with the planning. And we have an opportunity through the grant that Rosecrance received to, to do something better for the people of Urbana. And that's the motivation here.
Thank you. Okay, Chris.
Uh, thank you. Um, I want to point out a couple of good things that I did see in this. Eight percent only, only eight percent of the contacts get arrested. That's great. And, you know, sixty-three percent getting solved at the scene. That's great. I'm really concerned, though, that anybody in crisis after six PM or on the weekends are stranded. And so, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know how we resolve that. But that is a real big hole in our plan here is that when things happen after six PM or on the weekends, we don't have this available. You know, and I, you know, I'm still a little concerned about the weapons being displayed, but I, you know, that, that'll take some time to solve. But the other thing too is that we don't have a lot of places to take people. You know, if, you know, somebody doesn't have a place to live or family doesn't want them there for the rest of the night or whatever the reason may be, you know, where does this team take people? Do, you know, the hospitals, do they have room? Does Rosencrance have room in their inpatient facility? I mean, I don't know. But I think it, there are times that there's going to be need for emergency housing that night. So those are some thoughts. Thanks.
Okay, are there any other questions for our presenters? Any more comments?
Maybe Carleen could address some of the issues Chris raised.
I mean, I think that they're super villainy. You know, we, overall, the hospital doesn't want people there unless they really meet hospitalization criteria. There are some, you know, we have our crisis residential program. It is a small amount of beds. I will be the first one to say that. There is also the homeless shelter that depending on where they're at. There's also some of these community-based programs. I can speak really clearly that when we were part of the homeless coalition meeting about two weeks ago, there was talk that there are actually vouchers for people to be able to get a home. But if they are not in treatment or any services, they're not able to use that voucher, which was interesting to me. So we will now have the ability for them to be engaged in some programming and be able to get more stable housing. We already have some of that in the works. But, you know, we do have to look at, you know, just not just Rosecrance, but the community as well, about where are some of these other places that people could go? Because it is a concern that if someone does not have somewhere to go, you know, how will, how will they remain safe? How will treatment continue to assist them?
James?
Yeah, I, I just want to echo a couple of the points that, that Chris has brought up. I, I too feel like the, the display of a weapon in an approach like this is, is not conducive to a de-escalated situation. And, and as Chris and I know over years of talking about this, this idea of where, where do you take people? Unfortunately, too frequently historically, it was the jail and, and that's, that's not the path. I, I, the after-hours, the, you know, trying this as a model, ten to six is, is very limited. I, I hope that we get some information from it that shows if it's successful, then, you know, investing down a path like this would be, would make more sense for those after-hours and those weekends kind of times. But not, not without the further project that we're going to engage in that, that Jaya has, has advocated for. So I, I do, I do understand some of the concerns I'm hearing about how we're going about this. But I, I do think it's an opportunity that will give us an additional capability and teach us something in, in the process. It's definitely not the, the final answer.
I'd like to say something. I think that it's, I think that this is a, a good idea, especially for a start. And when I think of the, the difference between what the mental health assistance used to be before Reagan dismantled everything, it, it, it's definitely done with more compassion, what, what you're, what you're talking about right now. And for us to, there doesn't seem to be, at least from what I've observed through the past few decades, there, there's not funds that are actually put aside for mental health purposes as if, you know, people are going to just miraculously know that that's, those are the services they're going to need. My main question that I do have is, so I, I think this, I think this is a good start. I do agree with Chris in, in, you know, it's, it's, it's like if you have a crisis after six o'clock on a, on a Wednesday or a Friday, you know, you're just kind of out of luck. But, uh, so I do worry too, what happens to that person when that kind of hap, when that happens? I know that right now this is what is called a pilot program. Therefore, all of these questions can't be answered right away or trying to think of what to do. But I also wonder if there are any, if there are any, maybe I should just say, you know, regular citizens that would be willing in those kinds of instances to take in somebody for a night until someone can come pick them up in the morning? Is there anyone that would be willing to do that? That, that's, um, or are a safe house somewhere where that, where a person can at least lay their head until the next day when someone is available? That may be an idea. The other thing is, um, I think that when we think, I think of the fact that we absolutely have very little services like this, period, if any, that, you know, give this a chance and let's see what happens and get our feedback from the people that we help. That's the, the target audience, the target, the target population. And getting our, our feedback from them in a six-month period time or, or so when I, is what I think would be the most helpful. And information, you know, what, what do they think needs to be done? The other question I have is what do you do with a person that, that just refuses services? What happens to that person?
Right now, we continue to try to do follow-up with them. That's sort of when we put them on some of the case management teams where we might remove them from the CCRT program and place them in case management where case management might go onto the streets and try to find them. We also do linkage to family members. The hard part is they don't always have a family member. And so then it can just be community resources and see if there's a way in which we can do that. The other, I know a goal would be through the grant that we awarded, that you would really do almost like a city staffing. So if everybody knew, you know, Chief Seraphin, and he had touched nine different social service agencies and the police that we schedule a staffing and get everyone together at the table to talk about how we can help that person because it's interesting, all of the linkages and dotted lines when somebody is in the community and not getting help, there often is quite a few people that have been involved in their care or trying to help them and making sure that we're all on the same page with that continued follow-up service. But ultimately, it's hard. They have the right not to choose services. And that, that does become frustrating for the community, for the clinician, for the family member, for people who care about that person. But then we just try to be creative and how do we continue to support?
Okay, thank you. Shandra. Sorry, Mary Alice, I can get to you next.
Let Mary Alice go first.
Okay, Mary Alice.
So I, I just want to say a couple of things. The first one is, is that when I had my, it ended up being a one-on-one conversation. I, I think my primary concern with this was kind of minimizing the kind of police presence. And so one of the things that we talked about at the time was, you know, what kind of vehicle would they be, you know, coming up with? What, what would they be dressed as and so forth? So I'm pleased to hear that Carol said that they'll be in a, in an unmarked car. Because I think that anytime, you know, you're, you're put on a, a, willing to engage with people differently depending on how they present themselves. And so I think that we have to have very careful consideration of what that presentation looks like. So I'm, I am pleased to hear that that conversation is going on. And the second thing, I'm, I'm just sitting here trying to think, Jaya and Grace had wanted a vote. And I, I can't come up with a way that that would happen. Because the only thing I can think of is a straw poll. In terms of whether or not we think this is a good idea for a pilot. And I, and I can say for myself, I think that, I do think that, you know, right now, nobody's getting help. Nobody's getting followed up on. We don't have anything set up in our community for that. And there are a lot of unknowns. We just don't know how successful these types of things are going to be. It could be that ten to six is fine. It could be that one to eleven is fine. We just don't have those answers right now. So I, I just wanted to throw that out there because I, I do hear my colleagues saying that they want some kind of vote on this. But I, I don't quite under, I can't think procedurally how that would happen other than a straw poll. So those are my comments.
Okay, Shandra.
So you said this is a two-year grant. When does implementation start? And what, what does sustainability look like after two years? If all things go well?
Right. So the grant, you were able to start billing the grant as of August thirty-first of this year. You have to have all of the programs, which there are multiple fully implemented. You have to have all of the programs, which there are multiple, fully implemented by the end of this calendar year. For us, the way in which we will continue to find funding for a team like this is really community input. Our ability to collect data and show outcomes on reduced number of behavioral health calls, less maybe behavioral health crisis with law enforcement, linkages to services. That's the way in which we have been able to fund it in other communities. Right now, I mean, I can talk state of Illinois if anyone wants to hear about it. The state of Illinois is investing quite a bit of money into the 988 and the 590 grants, which is really the way in which the state wants to do crisis. We recently met with the director of mental health regarding Rosecrans and crisis systems and how we can continue to get funding as being one of the largest providers in the state of Illinois. So we will continue on our end to look at ways in which we can continue to fund programs like this because we do feel that there are gaps in multiple communities that we are in and a needed service. So some of it will be ever changing. This would be something I'd be more than willing to give updates to the council on if people are interested in sort of that sustainability piece. If this is something that they find is beneficial for more than just a pilot program.
Okay, one more question I have. How, how many communities is, will this program, will this just be Urbana or will it be a county thing?
It's just to be. Sorry, chief, based on the, the information that we have, we're, we're just gonna provide this with the, into the city verbiage.
Okay. And is that it? Okay, well, thank you for your, for your information and input. I really appreciate that. Next, we'll move on to public input and I hope the panelists stay on for a little while so that they can hear, at least hear the public input. Minnie Pearson, that's one of the first people. You need to unmute, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Pearson, are you there? You need to unmute still. Hello, Ms. Pearson. Are you there? If you could unmute your phone or your computer? The little microphone at the bottom?
I got you.
Okay.
Okay, I, I wasn't actually, I wasn't actually muted. I mean, I was clicking, I have a mouse that doesn't want to obey. But I'm here to basically talk about the camera. So if I'm in the wrong meeting, I can do this later. Is this a good time to do that?
Um, well, we're talking about a crisis correspondent team pilot program right now. You, if you want to wait till city council, yeah, that would be the most appropriate time.
Okay, cause now I'm lowering my, lowering my hand so, and then I'm going to turn off my mouth so that I will not disturb you all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pearson. Yeah, let's see, who's next? Alan Exarod?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, start when ready, thank you. So HB 2784. Let me double check to make sure that I said that correctly. HB 2784. I'm amazed this didn't come up in Carol Mitten's readings. I'm amazed that Rosecrans is seemingly willing to collaborate on such a thing when they know it's against state law. Cause if you know about 988, you know about the Stephen Watts Act. Stephen Watts was a resident in Chicago who was murdered by the police when they had responded to a mental health crisis. So before we get started, lest you look for loopholes, I'm going to read section 10 of the bill. Applicability, Home Rule. This act applies to every units of local government that provides or coordinates ambulance or similar emergency medical services or transportation services for individuals with emergency medical needs. A Home Rule unit may not respond to or provide services for a mental health or behavioral health emergency or create a transportation plan or other regulation relating to provision of mental or behavioral health services in a manner inconsistent with this act. So that is to say that what this bill says, you cannot, even in a Home Rule capacity, act in violation of. So now let's go into more of the meat. What does it say? Why am I bringing this up? Well, in section 30, someone else's microphone is on, in section 30 subsection A or paragraph A, let's not get into the minutia of how that's labeled. It says law enforcement responsibility for providing mental and behavioral health care. And then it says, in any area where responders are available for dispatch, law enforcement shall not be dispatched to respond to an individual requiring mental or behavioral health care unless that individual is involved in a suspected violation of the criminal laws of the state or presents a physical, threat of physical injury to self or others. This overbroad policy not only is in violation of this law, but the duration, if you want to get super nitpicky about it, actually intersects with the implementation date of this law with the statewide dispatch. But however, this law went into effect immediately. These are the rules now. I was at the bill signing. You can call Senator Scott Bennett's office. I was one of the phone calls involved in this. I've been organizing with these folks for years. So now let's talk about an alternative because y'all want to do something, right? There's something called the alt responder model and that's what is mandated in this act, which is to say that instead of the city sending police alongside behavioral health, because that is actually specifically prohibited in this bill. Sorry, in this law, it was passed this spring. I drove activists up from around the state to that bill signing. You can instead have Rosecrans respond first. And if they require or assess that it is necessitating police presence, then they can go. That is in compliance with the Stephen Edwards Watts Act, HB 2784. I'm amazed at how much reading you've done and you've managed to miss that. A middle schooler's book report is far better. Have a good night.
Okay. Um, Giovanna Benidetta?
Um, I just, I have a couple of questions on this because I, um, number one, let me preface this by saying that I am the parent of an adult daughter with mental health issues. Revolving around severe bipolar and she lives somewhere else now. But, you know, I've had plenty of experiences with her as an adult child living at home and dealing with the police in Urbana. And I would like to say, you know, they were always great, but a lot of times they felt like their hands were tied. This program didn't exist, at least nine, five, six, six years ago. I had to stop and think how old the kids were. And so what I'd like to know, and I think this is a question that, like a lot of the people that I deal with within the community too, on the other end. So what would a call look like? So let me give you a very typical example that happened in my house that I've talked with other parents in my situation happen. You know, the, the adult is in a frenzy, be it due to manias, psychosis, whatever is going on. They're threatening other people, maybe not to kill them, but just, you know, you know, I'm going to hurt you or I'm going to lock myself in my room and never come out, which is a danger to themselves. Especially since with so many of these mental illnesses, they swing back and forth very rapidly. And in the past, obviously, you know, as the other adult in the house, we called the police for help. It's determined that they can't really do anything. And we're stuck kind of in this revolving door, especially when they're refusing treatment. The other scenario is that, you know, how, so something like this sounds like it might work. So what, this is kind of like a typical situation, you know, where they're right on that edge. Officer isn't walking into danger, but yet as a, you know, so that's, I kind of would like to know what, what it looks like, you know, when that call is made to 911 and a scenario like that is given. Um, so even if you want to follow up with me later on that or email it to me, I, I would just like that information. And then, um, the other thing that I have is, um, this is more on, on my silver hat side is, um, being able to explain to this and educate the public about what this program looks like and how to use it. One thing very specifically is educating, um, the communities, the community agencies. I'm wording this wrong. The community activists like myself that are out there that lead organizations and that, you know, we have our boots on the ground, dealing with these and the questions that come into us. So being able to educate us so then we can educate the people that we come in contact with every day. So that they, you know, become, feel safe because I found over the years, we're that first line of defense. And, you know, getting them to trust police, getting them to trust counselors and it's tough. But if we're out there saying this is how this works and you're not going to go to jail if you call, you know, or however that's going to work, that will go a long ways. And, um, in making everyone safer and making this program work to the best of its ability here in Urbana.
Sorry, Sarah Nixon? It's the next person up.
Hello, City Council, Sarah Nixon here. This presentation this evening and proposal comes out of the blue, with the city having done zero public outreach, totally contradicting the PR that Urbana wants and values input from residents. Thank you to the city council members who are calling out Carol Mitten for her misrepresentations and for insisting that city council approval means a vote. Four minutes of input per member of the public is nowhere near enough time. No, with no advance warning, no time to ingest and then digest the presentation that you're throwing at us. This shows not a lack of planning, but rather a policy of deliberate exclusion and an ambush of the public and the city council. I and so many others have legitimate insights and personal experiences and tremendous willingness to participate here. You have subject matter experts right here throughout the Urbana community. In response to what I saw this evening, I think bringing Rosecrans into this is truly misguided. First, and just for example, I would be very, very concerned about domestic violence situations. We know that domestic violence crisis calls are among the most volatile and potentially dangerous situations for a social worker or I should say an unarmed person to wade into. I know from personal experience with my abuser that alcohol abuse is frequently involved as well as suicidality. A desperate person who's facing arrest or an intervention by police can feel like they're faced with a trigger situation. With, and with the amount of illegal guns proliferating out there, I think this is a disaster waiting to happen. Officer Christopher Oberheim was ambushed and murdered earlier this year in Champaign while answering a domestic violence call. That was an experienced officer, not too far from retirement apparently. So I don't see how it is prudent to send social workers into the fray. Yes, the community has been calling for alternatives to over policing minorities. We have told this administration over and over and over that we want better education for police officers and good people hired, a better culture and set of values at UPD that is domestic violence informed, trauma informed, racial bias informed, gender bias informed, and that focuses on de-escalation. Now, where is the authentic partnering with domestic violence experts? During the nine years referred to by Chief Seraphin, the Urbana Police Department has in fact displayed near total disregard for partnering with local domestic violence experts. Now, Officer Paige Bennett on paper sounds like a really good choice. This officer, I think, should be leading the program, should be here right now this evening, should be leading your presentation and fielding the questions. I would have liked to hear from Officer Bennett extensively this evening. And I'm sorry to say that Rosecrans, on the other hand, has a poor history of serving Urbana as is. And their own staff have taken to the internet to air complaints about working conditions and toxic employment environments. Frankly, Rosecrans reputation stinks based on the feedback and experiences described by the staff who work there and by clients who've taken the time to leave reviews about their experiences. I have to check the clock. I have no idea how much time I have left, 33 seconds. So I will skip the reviews. There is 100 reviews submitted anonymously by Rosecrans employees. And I'd like to conclude by saying, don't partner with Rosecrans. Instead, I urge you to focus on Officer Bennett. Learn more about her career trajectory, her vision and skills. It's my understanding that she has a dual skill set, a degree in social work and, and she's a professional police officer. That sounds genuinely promising. So why does UPD only have one Officer Bennett? I urge you to invest in many more Officer Bennetts. I believe that's a better approach. Go to the School of Social Work and start recruiting tomorrow. Thank you.
Brandy McCoy?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to say that, um, I mean, state law beholden. I'm really not sure why we're having, like, why we're at this point in the process, given that state law doesn't allow this sort of partnership between the police and mental health services. But that being said, I just, you were saying that you didn't see this as increasing police involvement. But, I mean, it just is. There is more police in front of these people who are calling 911, whether it's after the fact. There's more police. And as someone who has spoken at this council a few times about community distrust of the police, whether it's a march car or not, if, if the police roll up in front of my house, I don't feel safe. So that's what I wanted to throw in there. Not sure why we're having this conversation even.
Okay, thank you, Brandy. Are there any other hands, any other comments? Okay, with that, and no other business for this hearing, I adjourn this meeting and we will start city council meeting directly after. All right. Pursuant to the gubernatorial disaster proclamation and declaration of emergency for the city of Urbana, Illinois related to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with changes to the Open Meetings Act, Public Act PA 101 dash 0640. It has been determined that an in-person public meeting is not prudent for, or safe at this time. Members of the public body will attend remotely using Zoom webinar. Members of the public may attend via Zoom or view meetings remotely on Urbana Public Television through Comcast Xfinity on channels six and 1096, I3 broadband on channel six, AT&amp;T U-verse on channel 99 and streamed on the web. At this moment, I'd like to call the City Council Committee of the Hall Meeting. And streamed on the web. At this moment, I'd like to call the city council committee of the whole meeting. To order and will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hersi.
Here.
Ms. Colacetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Next, we have the approval of minutes. Of previous meetings, I'm asking for the approval of the minutes for the meeting of September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Can I get a motion, please?
I moved.
Second? Anybody?
One second.
It has been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Jaya. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I had a quick comment.
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Grace.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'll have to vote present tonight because I wasn't able to pick up my packet in person and the link. Didn't work, so I wasn't able to access the minutes. So just wanted to clarify that and. Maybe request the clerk if we could check the links or send those. I apologize for not realizing that earlier that I didn't have them.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding the minutes? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Hersi.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
Ms. Wilken.
Present.
All right, next, are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. We have three, four, we have three presentations tonight. We will start with a CPRB resolutions update. And that is coming from the executive office and you are good to go.
Hi, good evening, council members, Mayor Marlin and everyone else on the, at the meeting today. For those of you who aren't formally have met me yet, my name is Carla Boyd. I am the Human Rights and Equity Officer for the City of Urbana. In the role of the HREO, I serve as staff for the Civilian Police Review Board. And I was asked to present the following resolution to the council to ensure that the CPRB's position was on record. Concerning requirements for membership on the Civilian Police Review Board. Pursuant to a passing vote conducted by the Civilian Police Review Board CPRB. The CPRB recommends the following amendment to chapter nineteen, article three, section nineteen twenty-two. Qualifications of membership of the Urbana Code of Ordinances. Section nineteen dash twenty-two. States all members of the CPRB shall possess a reputation for fairness, integrity, and a sense of public service. B, no city employee may be employed to the board. Nor shall be appointed to the board, nor shall any member be a current employee of, contracted by. Or have any affiliation, whether current or former, with a federal, state, or local law enforcement agency. C, no person with a federal, with a criminal felony conviction or plea shall be eligible to serve on the CPRB. In making appointments, the mayor shall endeavor to reflect community diversity, including different neighborhoods, income levels, ethnicity, age, gender, and. Experience. The CPRB would like to strike. Letter C. No person with a criminal felony conviction or plea shall be eligible to serve on the CPRB. There was an additional vote taken on the removal of section nineteen twenty-two B. However, the vote resulted in a tie and the motion did not pass. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Boyd? Grace.
Uh, thank you. I had a question about. The legality of this since we have that side letter in the FOP contract. If there was some insight, legal counsel on if we can make that change now.
It's real, I can think I can provide that for your council member Wilkin. I think my understanding from the CPRB is basically they're just reiterating. Their passage of that vote, I guess, if you will, to continue to have the council be aware that they do want to seek that change. I think they understand, given the dynamic of negotiations, the side letter and the executed FOP contract. May not necessarily be possible based on all that, as you indicated in terms of legality of it. But I think they just want to continue to have the council understand that that's their position relative to that part of that ordinance.
So, um, do you have an answer to that question? Can we do this? I mean, you said it may not be possible, but. That's, that's what my question is. Is it possible? It may not. That's what I already know.
Appreciate the clarification on the idea of what they're after. So the answer to the question is no. Again, it's obviously part of the sideline of negotiated agreement between the FOP and the city. Relative to that, and so currently that is not capable of being changed by the council. Would be an item probably to bring up at next negotiations in terms of that contract. And I think the CPRB, I believe, and I'm hopefully not mistating, they can correct me at another meeting if they choose to do so. Understands that dynamic that may honestly be possible right now, but they just want to again reiterate to look at that in the future when this comes up again.
Okay, Mary. Oh, are you done? Go ahead.
Well, I was just wondering if you could point to any more, um, like precedent or, um, anything else that you're gathering that from? Or just the side letter is binding in and of itself.
Well, it is, and I think again, you've had the direction from the city's council that negotiated that particular contract in terms of the position on the idea of. The relative bona fide occupational qualification as a word to the idea of appointments as well as far as why. There's no issue in terms of that that provision is now illegal based on the idea that city's ordinance relative to discrimination. But I can certainly, if the council desires to do so, put together a formal memo outlining all of that and how it all plays out.
I would personally appreciate that.
Well, Mary Alice had her hand up and then Jaya.
Two quick things, just for clarification. Carla, the section C that you said was a tie vote, was that for previous law enforcement employment?
Section B and yes.
Oh, sorry, section B. Okay, my notes are wrong. And then I just wanted to mention that Ricardo Diaz is his hand up. I don't know if it's to join this conversation or to provide public input. But I believe he is the current chair.
He is.
Okay, get, Jason Kim, we get Ricardo in for panelists. So that he can speak to this as well. And meantime, Jaya. We're waiting for Ricardo.
To go back to Grace's question and ask for further clarification of. Is it that we can't do this or is it that we can't do it and have it actually take effect? Because I think those could be two different things. I understand the, the binding aspect of the contract, but. Even if it meant it couldn't go into effect with this current contract, are we not able to move forward with? Also, the council recognizing that this is an issue and voting on it.
Yeah, I, I guess my suggestion would be, I'm not sure why the council would vote on something that would necessarily be ineffective ultimately. Relative to that, I'm sure the discussion may center around the idea of potential members of the council wanting and desire to change that. Particular ordinance provision. But I would offer the suggestion, and I'm not sure, a vote in terms of knowing heading into the vote that. It's void realistically would be something the council would want to do.
Okay, Ricardo, I guess you. Can you speak?
Sure. Am I coming through?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, yes and yes on, on, on our side. I think that we've, the second time we present this suggestion. We presented it last year well before. The FOP contract was, was closed. If you will, at the worst, we would be doing what Ms. Colacetti also said. We may be too late to this, to, to this decision, except for this, the side letter at the last contract was also signed. Proposed and, and, and agreed to after the fact. What, the mechanics are yours to figure out, but if there was a side letter from the opposite direction as to a contract. We would suggest that you, you could initiate a side letter for the contract. Originating on this side, not on the other side. If we really wanted to do it. There are mechanics to be worked out, especially if when there's a question of, of violating our own ordinances. But I wanted to reiterate our position as the CPRB. We flagged this early. We brought it to council early. And we remain. Solid on this is not a good idea on the ordinance. It may have been when it was, when, when the. The CPRB ordinance was begun. But what we've heard is old arguments to a changing position that we have taken. And that we strongly recommend to you. We understand that it is very much your decision as to how, go about it, but you would have our, our full support and our full. Logic of how we, uh, we arrived at insisting on this particular point, even if it seemed like it was. After the fact.
Okay, Christopher, thank you, Ricardo.
Dave, can we do a side letter? A new side letter for, for the FOP contract?
What I would offer again, I, I think that may be a question more driven to the city's lead attorney negotiator on that. Midterm bargaining can be a very dicey subject. Once you try and reopen a contract and here, one that's basically just recently been executed in terms of trying to make adjustments after the fact. I'm not suggesting that it couldn't be done, but I think that may be best answered and responded to by the attorney for the city that was in those negotiations.
Let me see. Mary Alice, could you take the chair for a minute?
Sorry if I get my mouse. All right, the chair recognizes.
I just want, thank you. I, I guess the question I want to ask, Ms. Boyd, I know that you, you were, you struck through the, the. You want to strike through the particular. Issue in the ordinance. My, I guess my question is. Do, do we do that with an, or repealing that particular part of the ordinance? How, how, how do we go about voting on, on that, on that? And then rewriting a side letter for the next FOP contract? That's what I was thinking.
Well, I'm not versed in protocols of resolution. I would defer to. Either Mr. Wesner or Ms. Mitten on how to be able to do that. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Would you like me to, would you like me to respond in some way?
Yes.
I think that Dave's advice is, is probably the way to go, which is. It's, it's, um, when, when you think about the, when you think about what is involved in negotiating a contract. To focus on one term without having the totality of issues understood. I think is, is. Potentially problematic. So I think the intent of the CPRB is as Carla and Ricardo have stated. Which is they want to be on record for the future to, um, when the opportunity presents itself to have their views clearly. Understood. But there, you know, you, you just can't, you can't negotiate one, one narrow issue in isolation. And so. I, I would just, I would just ask people to, to think about that before you. Try to take some action, but I think it would be useful to have the council that was. Was involved in the negotiation here available if you wanted to discuss it further.
Okay.
Would you let the chair back, Charisse?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
All right, I relinquish the chair to Charisse.
Thank you, Mayor Marlin.
Just a reminder that this is, we are in the presentation portion of the agenda, so this is, this is verging into discussion at this point. And there are a lot of questions being asked that we really don't have the people here that should answer them. So if you want to add this as a discussion item to a future agenda, that would be the, the way to go, but we just don't have. We don't have the staff and especially the legal counsel here who should be answering these questions at this point.
Okay, I just wanted to get some clarification regarding any of that and now's the time to do that kind of. Grace should be the last one.
Okay, thanks. Um, just with Carol saying that, you know, for the record that they were on for future negotiations. And you know that this was brought up earlier before this past negotiation. This is the second time it's been formally brought to council. So my question is why the CPRB side letter was still included when this was the clear. You know, request from CPRB and do you anticipate that anything would be different as far as. City administration with the next contract? Like, why would the CPRB letter be in this contract? And we would think that it wouldn't be included in the next one.
I, I, at the moment, I can't speak to the side letter in or out. That, that part, I, I'm not the, the best person to address. But what I, what I will say is, um, I think there was some concern on the part of the CPRB that their views weren't made known. To the negotiating team and I assured them that they had been. Um, and they, and there were changes made to the side letter that were responsive to things that. Particular issue that the CPRB had brought to the council a year ago. Which had to do with requiring a first person account. And, um, so that is no longer required. And, um, that, that was struck from the side letter. So I, I'm just trying to. Trying to have you understand that there, because it's a negotiation, just because you have these desires. It's each thing that you want is not necessarily achievable in the context of the give and take of a negotiation. But it isn't that, it isn't that the, it isn't that the CPRB's views were not known. And it isn't that there wasn't progress made. It just wasn't this particular issue that we made progress with. I hope that's helpful.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Boyd. Um, I appreciate the update. Next is an update for the comprehensive plan and twenty oh five comprehensive plan assessments. And this is being brought to us by Andrea Rudy. Okay, so, um. Take it away, Andrea and Lily.
Great. Well, thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on a couple of issues that we'd like to share with you. One is an update on the, the comprehensive plan process and the other is a document that's an assessment of the two thousand five comp plan. Which you received in your packet. Lily's going to share some slides and these slides we will send to you. So that you have them. You don't have to write, write all the notes down. But the, the first thing in the slide presentation we'd like to cover is, is the timeline for Imagine Urbana. Just to kind of refresh those, fresh the memory of those that have seen this before, new council members, maybe just, this might be new to you. So right now we are in the, the initial community engagement phase and it's a very broad phase where we're out at events. Getting feedback from the community. The second phase will happen after we finish the. This broad community engagement portion and we will publish a report on the data that we've gotten. Tonight, I'm going to share just some preliminary data and just so you can kind of get a flavor of some of the comments that we're, we're hearing back. And then the last phase, we'll get into the more of the deeper dive into focus groups on the different issues that, that have surfaced. In this broad community engagement phase. Lily. So everybody, I know all the, the council members have been on our website, but for the community at large, just to kind of reiterate what you can do on the website. We have an ideal wall where people post ideas, share, you can see what everybody's talking about. There's a short survey you can take there. We have an interactive map where you can pin places. There's a short survey you can take there. We have an interactive map where you can pin places and post pictures. Uh, we have a, uh, videos, informative videos on what Imagine Urbana is like, or what it's about. And in, in an impact video on how it impacts people. And then it's also a way to receive future communication. So anybody that registers on the site is able to get future communications if they, if they would like to. So these are some of the community outreach methods that we have. We talked about the website. Uh, one is a postcard promotion that hopefully everyone got a couple of weekends ago. It, it came, uh, the weekend after Labor Day, uh, went to 21,000 households in Urbana, six one oh one and six one oh two. And so we're just now starting to get some of that feedback, people going online. And it's, uh, there's a text survey that's now available in four languages. So it's Chinese, French, Spanish and English. Uh, we've been passing out bookmarks with that information on it at a lot of our events, as well as, uh, different places such as the library and, uh, some other, uh, partners. Uh, we also have a bingo card. This has been popular. It's a way to get people to explore Urbana, just get out and about and find out new things about the city. Uh, we have a, a pop-up banner. Some of you that attended council meetings in person have seen that in the lobby of the city building. And then we have a feature grams, which are cards that people can, uh, write out visually what they'd like to see happen in Urbana. This particular feature gram, you can see they talk about downtown and all the things they'd like to see happen in downtown. So it's a way for people to express themselves. Uh, this is just a snapshot literally of, uh, different events we've been at this summer. A lot of different community partner events. We do not have events that are strictly for Imagine Urbana because we really feel like we need to partner with some of our, uh, existing community agencies where they already have the trust of people and they feel comfortable providing feedback, which has been very effective for us. Uh, we've also had the, uh, urban planning class, both the spring semester and fall semester now have been working with us. Our plan commissioner chair, Dustin Allred's class, it's a class five, 10 in, at the University of Illinois. So this spring, uh, they had about 20 people in the class and they wanted to reach out to people that were underrepresented populations in Urbana. So they chose these four groups to, uh, really reach out to, and they provided a final class report. And we'd be glad to share that with council. Uh, this report was done in May, just of their findings and also recommendations, uh, going forward on how we can keep engaging with, with these populations. Uh, this fall, uh, it's more of an interactive, they selected three neighborhoods that they're really going to go out and, uh, work hard to reach those people in those neighborhoods. So they're planning events. Uh, we've had a couple of events already. Uh, they've got a couple of coming up this week in, in those neighborhoods. And they're also working with, uh, Lou Hopkins, who's on the plan commission, uh, works at the University of Illinois on an autonomous mapping tool project, and they will have this report ready for us in December. So that'll end, they'll be at the tail end of that broad community engagement phase that we're currently in. Uh, so this is, uh, Urbana by the numbers. We've, uh, used this slide in several community presentations just to get people updated on where we're at. You can, at a quick glance, you can see how many website views there've been, a little over 4,000. Uh, the number of man hours that we've had in, uh, direct outreach. And these man hours are just the event hours. It's not actual, it's not multiplied by the time, number of staff people that were at these events. So it's just true, uh, outreach hours. Uh, you can see the community partners. We've had 11 partners, uh, so far that we've been, uh, working with on events. Down in the lower right-hand corner, you can see some of those events, uh, Silver Hearts, uh, Downtown Get Down. We just had, uh, Meadowbrook Park. There was a Head Start Awareness Event that we were at. Uh, also we've been at Pride Fest. There's a lot of events that we've been at. We're keeping track of all those so that we know, uh, you know, the different populations that have been present at those, at those events. Uh, so right now we've had 191 surveys. You can see the wall submissions. All of these are from, uh, the second two items are from the website. Surveys are coming in from various sources. The website, the tech survey, and also in-person surveys. We find at some of the events, people are more comfortable filling out a handwritten survey and that's, that's certainly an option and we, we welcome that. Uh, the future grams have, uh, we've got them at events and you can also mail those back to the city as well. Uh, bingo cards, a lot of those have been distributed. Only three so far have been submitted. So they're going to have good chances on getting those Rick, Rick's Bakery, uh, gift cards. And then, uh, a lot of bookmarks distributed. These are two of our interns that we had over the summer that are, uh, pictured there, Natalie and Lena, who some of you met. And then this is just some of the preliminary data that we're getting answers to the question, how do you imagine Urbana in 20 years? So it really runs the gamut of, you know, what people's interests are and what they'd like to see the city look at. I'm sure none of these things are really surprising to anybody. Uh, we're hearing a lot of these comments in public input at council meetings. Um, so it's just nice to see some of these things get validated and we'll have more data, of course, in our, right in our next report. And then where priorities should be, again, um, you know, everything from schools to our taxes, uh, you know, typical infrastructure issues, et cetera. So, um, kind of the theme has been keep what's good and change what can be improved. Those are some of the comments we're getting. And then these are the reports. Uh, Lilly is going to be going over the, uh, the conference of plan assessment, the 2005 assessment. Uh, the next thing we'll, uh, we'll be working on is an examine Urbana, which is what, what Urbana is today. Um, and it'll be a collection of story maps and we hope to have that, uh, probably by January, sometime in the winter that we'll be able to present that. And then, uh, the preliminary, uh, public engagement summary, uh, we'll be having that in the, in the spring as well. And so those are, that's our update, quick update. And like I said, we'll provide these slides for you. And if you have any questions, you know, please reach out to Lilly or I. And then Lilly's now going to go over the 2005 conference of plan.
Yeah. And, and I'd like to say before I get started, I only have a couple of minutes to go over what, um, staff, a lot of staff time and a lot of work. Um, so if you would like to see a, a longer presentation on it, Plan Commission. Um, the most recent Plan Commission meeting was a special study session on this assessment report. And there's some really good feedback and discussion as well from, from members, um, of Plan Commission. Um, so I'm going to go over, you know, in a, in a, a quick, uh, couple of minutes summary of what this was. Um, why did we review the 2005 plan? One of the most important things before you set off in making another, a new comprehensive plan is really assess what the last one and what the current one has, has done and what it, what it did well. Um, and in some of the things that we can improve for this next round of comprehensive planning. It was really important for us to really kind of find that, that information. And a lot of it had to be done, um, with kind of really organic, um, and detailed, uh, research because there wasn't a lot of, um, updates in this process after the 2005 plan was, was approved and adopted. Um, so how did we, we do this? We kind of sliced and diced the plan in a lot of different ways. Um, we took all the goals, objectives and implementation strategies. And we evaluated, um, what we did do, our accomplishments, what kinds of things did get done. What did we seem like are, um, the priorities and our implementation strategies? And the groups that we decided we were really going to work with and what we called out and kind of the scope of the 2005 plan. Uh, we evaluated all of this information and we tried to, um, kind of thoroughly go through the, the plan and then provide like a high level, um, analysis of that. And that is something that took a lot of different, different departments across the city. Um, and it took a lot of hours of, and work, um, with, you know, me early in the morning, couple hours in, in your meeting that you have really important work to do and you had to take that time out to, to answer, you know, a lot of questions about what the past 16 years has, um, has been in their department. So that was an amazing process and a lot of really good work upon a lot of the departments at, at, uh, the city of Urbana. Some people just got very sporadic, uh, emails full of lots and lots of questions. And everybody was really a great support and, and it's really truly a staff effort, complete staff effort. Um, I'm going to go over just a couple, because we, we only have a couple of minutes, go over a couple of the things that we, lessons learned. Um, and they're summarized in the executive summary, the first couple of pages of the document. Um, and so some of the things that we found, um, was this neighborhood in corridor lens. Um, and again, this is presentation was a little bit more in-depth when, with Plan Commission. So please review that if you'd like to, um, or if you have any questions, reach out to Andrea and me. Um, but the comprehensive plan, the current one, had some neighborhoods that got a lot of attention and a lot of, um, detail and their future land use and, and implementation strategies. And they actually didn't help a lot of those goals and objectives get, it, um, uh, prioritized. And then we had a lot of communities that were left out of that process. So one of the things that we'd like to keep the comprehensive plan at a community-wide level. Another thing was integrating, uh, general community concerns across the plan. Um, there are a lot of parts about land use and transportation, which is what a traditional comprehensive plan, um, covers. It's something that's dictated necessarily by the state of Illinois, but it's evolved a lot greatly over the past hundred years with the concept of a comprehensive plan is. And land use and transportation does relate to a lot of different things like neighborhood self, safety and health. Um, different, um, aspects of the, some, um, economic development. And so really integrating a lot of things that people tell us today are more general, high level and what they expect government in general to be trying to really relate that and bring that back to the comprehensive plan and into this. That means that we really have to integrate more general community concerns. The actions taken versus what we prioritized, we prioritize and we try to create a, a very sound strategic document for the future. But oftentimes, as, as you're probably aware, there are plenty of times where we can get sidetracked with the issue of the day and that can make it really difficult for us to stick to our strategic priorities. And some things really fall by the wayside. If it's not immediately in the tension of the city, then it doesn't get done. And there's a lot of really important things that comprehensive plan covers that need to get done. So, um, making sure that we annually evaluate the process, the progress that we're making and updating the plan and the implementation strategies. If we, we so choose to have that, um, structure, would be a really important step in making sure that we meet that and being really transparent in that process. Equity integration, uh, there was a very, um, small amount of equity information and goals and strategies in the plan that, uh, were in a section that was, you know, I think a lot of folks wouldn't really recognize as being where you turn the pages to, to go to see equity. And that's a really important part of this new upcoming comprehensive plan is for us to be more equitable, um, throughout the whole plan. Um, and then the time spent planning, this one kind of gives me a couple of heart palpitations, but we do strive to meet this, the demands of the community needing an updated plan, um, as fast as, as staff time will allow. So, um, we'll work to create an updated comprehensive plan. We'd like to have that, um, sometime in 2023. So that's a very high level review of the assessment document. It's the first supporting document. It'll be posted on the city's website. It'll also be posted on the Imagine Urbana website. And so we'll have this document in, to go forward and to direct kind of the community's interests in knowing what we have accomplished and what conferences plans do. But we'll also meet that and supplement that with Examiner Banner. An Examiner Banner will have this information plus more about comprehensive planning and what the city of Urbana does and what are the considerations for the future, um, of Urbana with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Lilly. Thank you, Andrea. And okay, Grace, very quickly.
Just wanted to again also say thank you guys for putting this together. I think especially the lessons learned is really helpful. Um, and I hope that we can fully utilize this plan for the next time that it's in effect. And I guess my question was if you could, um, as far as you know, is there like an example you could give us for a clear path for using the comprehensive plan and guiding the city's decision? And that might be outside of the scope of, I know, just putting it together. Um, but if you could help us visualize how to fully utilize this plan in city operations.
Yeah, there, well, um, I can give you a really traditional, um, example of this. The Plan Commission is, as you might have heard before, is responsible for creating this plan, right, imprisoning it to the city council. There are criteria amongst, um, that Plan Commission use the comprehensive plan for, for instance, it, um, issues of zoning, issues of land use development. Um, that's the really, uh, traditional idea of what the comprehensive plan does. So you have a subdivision come through and you know, the community has goals and needs of where roads go and what that kind of looks like and how it kind of gets built and what the, the purpose and strategy of that. But today's comprehensive plans really expand upon that in a many different ways. So oftentimes, for instance, if you're having a, um, a prioritization or you have an annual budget, there's a lot of times that you could, um, you take a look at your strategic document that comes from a lot of public input across the community. And there are also strategies that, that the whole community has signed off on. And the measures in the, the, what that, that success looks like, you can refer back to something like a comprehensive plan because you had that comprehensive amount of input. And then you can make, help you guide that strategic level thinking. It, and it helps you get to that higher level of looking at the community as a whole, as opposed to sometimes what can happen in more inequitable situations where it's responding to the loudest thing that's right in front of us.
Okay, and Jaya.
I think, thank you, Al. Try to keep this quick. Could you just explain to me if we're moving from that more community specific to that more, you know, community-wide, larger Urbana, uh, perspective? How does that play into those conversations about land use for different parts of Urbana?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So that community-wide focus, um, it really helps us really focus in on providing an, an level of, an equal level of attention to neighborhoods. But one of the things that a comprehensive plan can do is ask that we really provide, uh, a more in-depth, um, small area plans or neighborhood plans, for instance, or corridor plans. Or for another thing that the last comprehensive plan did a really great job of was transportation-related plans, like the bicycle master plan, the pedestrian plan. And the cool thing about doing that is about removing that from the comprehensive plan and focusing in on that is that the plans that came out of that last comprehensive plan were much more detailed and they were really easy for staff to pull it off the shelf and implement it. There, they came, for instance, the bicycle master plan came with implementation matrices. It came with a network of people. It also, it had immediate effects, right? Not, not immediate, but in comprehensive planning terms, immediate effects, right? So eventually we were a gold level community. Um, we're the, actually the only gold level community in the state of Illinois. Uh, we have a lot of bicycle infrastructure on projects of a certain size that we incorporate in, as well as pedestrian infrastructure. And we have a myriad of, um, different levels that we score different things in both of those plans. And some, both plans also address things that the community has said they're really, they're concerned about when it comes to those, those specific topics. A really good, quick aside to that as well, is that different neighborhoods have wildly different needs. And so that's another thing that can be really, um, helped in that process of keeping it at a community level is that one neighborhood's needs may be more affected about, you know, their neighbors and industrial uses or, or what the university is doing. And another neighborhood is really affected about, really interested in how the city interacts with what's happening inside their neighborhood. Um, what the programs and services are, are exist, are there appropriate levels of infrastructure? Um, so that's, that's a really, another good example of keeping it at a community-wide.
Okay. Thank you, Lilly and Andrea. Appreciate the presentation. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is, um, our next presentation regarding a push tax, Wayne Williams and Thomas Condon. And I'm going to just introduce, uh, Wayne. Uh, we know that Wayne is our, is our township assessor and, um, I'm gonna let him take it from there. Okay, Wayne.
Hi, everybody. I, uh, met Tom Condon at the IML conference, um, a couple of weeks ago. And he did a presentation on a push tax. Tom Condon is a lawyer at Peterson, Johnson and Murray. He authored the first push tax passed by, uh, the village of Oklahoma and has been, uh, representing them and, uh, various, uh, legal issues regarding that. But I'll let Tom take it from here and explain what the push tax is and then come back at the end and talk about, uh, revenue.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Tom Condon. I'm a lawyer. I practice in, uh, Chicago. Uh, I represent, uh, multiple municipalities. I'm here tonight. Uh, I met Wayne, uh, last two weekends ago, uh, at the IML conference. And I gave a presentation on municipalities and video gaming. And after that conference, uh, you know, Wayne came up and, and we started talking about, uh, regulation of, of video gaming. And, uh, asked me if I would come. And that was easy to accept considering we were on Zoom. Uh, I, I think the, the drive down 57, uh, not, not that I wouldn't be willing, but, uh, at any rate, so, uh, uh, just a, a brief summary of what, uh, what the push tax, uh, is. Uh, the push tax is a, uh, a penny. There, the push tax has been passed by most community, communities, um, and it's a penny per push on, it's an amusement tax. Uh, that is on the player of the video gaming terminal. That is that there is a penny, uh, each time that person That is that there is a penny uh each time that person plays. Now, you again, Wayne said that he would talk to you about uh the revenue. Uh, the the tax uh that was passed by uh both the village of Oaklawn and the city of Waukegan, which uh currently are involved in litigation. The uh only gaming machine operators association has challenged it uh in that the. In the Waukegan case, the court, what they do is is they allege uh that it is an unconstitutional occupation tax, that it's an impermissible license. Uh, for revenue that uh it violates the uniformity clause because. Uh, most municipalities, uh particularly the two that 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 were involved in litigation. Uh, don't tax uh automatic amusement devices such as, you know, Pac-Man or uh Golden Tee or any of those things. Uh, mo- those arguments uh uh in. Save for one argument have been dismissed by the case uh by Waukegan. But just going back to, right, I I I know that you guys have uh video gaming. Uh. Uh, what happened, um, really the the it the uh the impetus for the tax was. That when the Video Gaming Act was amended uh to add. For the sixth machine.
Andrea. Yeah, so maybe Jason.
We can hear you.
There she goes. Uh, so the impetus was so for uh, you know, when they added the sixth machine, uh, the revenue. Uh, you know, there there's a significant uh drain on resources uh for municipalities with regards to video gaming. Uh, gaming in general gambling uh. It it just it requires an increase in city services. And so when they added the sixth machine, the revenue split. Uh, you know, twenty-five percent goes to the state. One percent goes to the video gaming terminal operator, central communication system. Sixty-nine percent is split evenly between the establishment and the terminal operator. And out of that, then there's only five percent uh that goes to uh the local municipality. Again, I uh. The um, you know, kind of one of the things that that I talked about in my presentation. Is that when money is spent on gaming, uh, it's just not spent in other areas of the community. Um, what's unique about Illinois and gaming, uh, it's the only, one of the only states that doesn't require. A sign uh talking about gambling addiction, whereas if you go to a casino. Um, it does, uh, there's also there what's weird about the video gaming terminals. Uh, and it doesn't allow them to track player tracking. Um, so you you don't have an idea of how much each person uh is putting into the machine. Why that was done um. Really, the and I will tell uh the the reason that the push tax was done uh both in in Oaklawn and in Waukegan. Um, which of the two that I represent, it really was as a means to offset the adverse effects of gambling within the community. One of the goals was to use the revenue to um. Do community outreach. Um, really, you know, for lack of a better term, it it's all it's it's like a a syntax. Um, and. So I I Wayne, I don't know if if that covered, uh, I I think it's more of a uh, I'm happy to take questions, you know, it's a. Uh, the regulation of video gaming uh is very new. Um, and you know, it's for for the most part. I shouldn't say it's not new. Um, obviously, you know, video gaming uh municipalities could have opted out of video gaming. Uh, municipalities could have limited the number of machines uh that are allowed. But for uh quite a period of time, you know, people thought that the only way to regulate was based upon the placement. Uh, was to for terminal uh license fees. Um, whether it be the terminal operator's license or the uh fee per machine. Um, and uh the push tax, um, we believe um has is uh another way. Uh, for you for a home rule municipality to regulate the um video gaming within their jurisdiction.
So I just wanted to add that, um, so. Just as summary, the push tax is a tax of a penny every time someone pushes the machine to play uh the video gaming machine. Um, what a push tax is not is it's not an endorsement of gaming. Gaming is here, uh, whether you like it or not, it's here. Um, and frankly, I think we should tax it. Um, there are other uh states that tax uh these video gaming terminals. Much higher um than we do. Um, for example. Um, in Oregon, there's a tax rate of seventy-three percent and Pennsylvania, there's a tax rate of fifty-two percent, South Dakota fifty percent. Here in Illinois, it's thirty percent. Um, the Illinois Gaming Board puts out monthly reports um that shows the amount wagered. So it's very easy to get a very conservative number of how much revenue a penny per tax, a penny per push tax should bring in to the city. Um, so for example, there was about ten million dollars wagered on um. In August of this year, um, and if you divide that by four and multiply it by a penny, that comes out to about twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, in twenty nineteen, um, that number averaged. About. Thirty-seven thousand a month. Um, that did drop in twenty twenty because the parlors were closed because of COVID. Um, since um since twenty nineteen, the maximum bet has gone up from two dollars to four dollars. So even though there's been an increase in gaming, the the amount of revenue, the tax we bring in is lower. Um, but right now it's still averaging um this year about twenty-seven thou- it would it would average about twenty-seven thousand dollars a month. Um, so if you have any other questions.
Um, can we do a few quick questions if uh very quickly?
Yeah, just before I just want to add one thing. So uh, the reason I'm bringing this, I asked to present this now is because the General Assembly has bills pending. Um, that would actually prohibit the city. It would it would preempt home rule um to prohibit the city from. Um, from implementing this tax. So veto session starts.
Yes, correct, correct. And so there there was a house bill that was passed. Uh, it's before the Senate, it is hap- it it did. Uh, it passed in the House and it's going to limit home rule authority and it will limit a home rule authorities ability to regulate. Uh, video gaming terminals if it if it passes specifically, it would uh, but the current version only will allow those entities that already have the push tax. To continue to have it. And that was a bill that was introduced in last session and it's up in uh veto session in the next two weeks.
Right, veto session starts uh October nineteenth.
Okay, Mary Alice.
Well, I'll make my my question quick. Thank you very much, uh, Thomas for coming tonight. I'm wondering if you could send us an email some examples of what Waukegan and Oaklawn are doing with the funds. You had mentioned that they uh were trying to. Use those funds to um provide more resources for gambling addiction. If you have very specific things that they were doing, it would be great if you could email us.
Uh, uh, Mary, I'll um trust the 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 um our alderman, I apologize.
Don't worry about it.
All the person uh. Um, I've been out a long time and so the at any rate, the uh, what I will tell you is that when it was first passed, since the day that it was passed. Uh, that it has been involved in, uh, excuse me, it's been involved in litigation. And so the litigation uh in only one community, there's only only one terminal operator that actually paid. Uh, before they filed suit and so it's been in that in enmeshed in litigation uh on motions for dismissal. Uh, uh, for some period. Uh, so the likelihood that you would receive uh in in the very short period, uh, you know, a quick payment. Um, that is unless the gaming bill passes, if the gaming bill passes. Uh, it, excuse me, that the house bill that's going to limit the ability for the push tax. Uh, the terminal operators obviously lose their ability to say that the state uh that's under the exclusive uh uh jurisdiction of the state because the state just ratified it.
And I want to be very clear about the timeline here. Oaklawn passes tax, the gaming operators sue. They started to lose in court and then they got the legislature to file a bill that would eliminate the ability for home rule units to do this tax. There is one company that paid the tax and it was promptly, after they started paying, it was promptly bought by one of the other video gaming companies.
Hmm. Okay, um, Jaya, very quickly.
Good question. Yeah, um, I'm wondering, since this the tax is actually on the people playing the game, is there anything looking at the impact on people who might already have a gambling problem?
Well, that so once, once you, yeah, once you start to collect, right, you know, you can decide to spend money for that. Uh, when you go into a casino, you know, they have signs, um, call this number if you have a gambling addiction and there are funds to support that. It's just not the case with video gaming.
And so obviously the 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 uh the power, right, obviously the constitution, uh, Illinois constitution allows home municipalities to tax for certain things. Uh, the way that you would, the purpose of the taxes is for the welfare of the, you know, uh, for the general welfare of the community.
Okay, thank you, um, Mr. Condon and Wayne. I appreciate um the information. I I really just wanted the this information to be known. And um, I hope that we can discuss it and maybe uh do a a discussion period sometime in the future.
All right, just just be aware that.
Yeah, there's a, there's a time limit.
There's a time limit.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Thank you. Okay, moving on to public input. And the first person I'll call in is uh Giovanna DeRibetto Benedetto. Okay, Giovanna.
Hi, um, thank you so much. Um. And I'm just going to reread something for a couple of comment group. That I um that I emailed the city council members and then there's something that I'd like to show you. Um, as many of you know, the um Silverhearts works closely not only with the Silverwood community. But we are currently working with Steer Place and Lehrman communities. Safety is the number one concern that is communicated to us. When a crime happens, the people in the community are the witnesses not only to the actual act. But to the perpetrators running from the crime. However, our eyes can only capture so much information and often despite the witnesses, there's not enough to pursue and find perpetrators. I recently moved from Aspen Courts to Austin and Ivanhoe Way. Two days after moving in, there was a shooting on Ivanhoe Way at a house just outside of the complex and only one block away from my house. I saw the car fleeing past my house. However, due to the speed of the car and it being dark in front of my house, I was only able to make out the color of the car. They shot into a house where a twelve-year-old child was home alone. If there had been a camera installed in the area, the police would have had the information that witnesses could not provide. Thankfully, this time, no one was hurt this time. However, what happens the next time that same house gets shot at? What happens when that child gets hurt or someone else? This is a situation that may be prevented with information from these cameras. These crimes affect all involved. And the trauma our community is experiencing must come to an end. Too many of us, too many children are hearing gunshots. Too many people are walking out and seeing crime scenes that look like a scene from a crime show. My family specifically will never forget walking out and seeing that when we lived in Silverwood. And that is what my children described it as at the time. Our city is under attack and we must do everything we can to create a community where trauma from these crimes is no longer the norm. We must use every tool we can to catch those responsible for these traumas so they can be held accountable for the damage they cause. This is not just an issue in marginalized communities. We all know it is happening everywhere. We believe that installing these cameras is another tool that will only help to reduce that trauma. And they will, and it will help make that happen. We, as so many community members, and you look forward to a day when we can live without those fears daily. That is from my team at Silverhearts. I have another message from a little girl who tried to stay up but um fell asleep. Um. There's one part of our community that really. Can me personally is the most affected, but also as a community leader that we rarely hear from. Our children. Lily wanted to be here tonight to introduce this video and voice her support on behalf. Of our children. But sleep one out. So on behalf of our children and from their. Voice. And how this trauma affects them and why these cameras are so important. I'd like you to watch this and um I won't have anything to say afterwards because I think um the video says it all.
Um, do we have time for to do that or Giovanna, maybe you can send it to us. Uh, through the city council email.
That's actually another um person giving public input.
Okay. Well, I know there are a lot of people with public input tonight, but I was, I did, okay, okay. So this is. What happened? It is coming up, okay. Okay, so this is.
Hello, and I help work for Silverheart and I'm gonna. Um, talk about how it's like to live in a neighborhood. Once you're a kid.
So, do you know, do you remember how old you were when we moved to Silverwood?
No.
No, you were three years old and Ivo was about five months old. It itty bitty. In the stroller all the time, huh? And everybody fell in love with you guys, right? So you really, you've grown up here, haven't you? You've been here a long time. So can you tell me, like, I know we've talked about maybe some of the things that you had to go through that were hard? When you lived here, can you tell me about that stuff?
Like shootings, people being killed. Some of my friends have had to move away.
Why did some of your friends have to move away?
Because their parents have got other jobs and probably because of some shootings. Things that they can't be around. I don't know.
Yeah, how did it make you feel when that stuff was happening or when that stuff happens?
Really sad because one of my friend Jane, she's, she went to school with me and. Since I was, since I was in preschool and. We were best friends.
Yeah, you still miss them, don't you? Yeah.
We used to climb on top of the friends together.
How much trouble did you used to get into for that?
A lot.
And you still did it, huh? Yeah, mhm. Not the smartest decision, huh? So was there anything else that like that upset you or that made it hard for you to live over here? What would you do when a shooting happened? What would you have to do to reset?
Stay inside.
Oh, that had to stink. Did you like staying inside when that happened? No. You were kind of stuck with your sister living there. Was there anything else that was hard or that you didn't like about living over here?
No. I really didn't like people getting killed because no matter what color people are, they still male because they're people.
Okay, well, thank you, Lily, for that. And then next we have, um, Minnie Pearson.
Good evening. Uh, thank you. Thank you for this time, uh, to speak to you. Uh, good evening, Mayor Marlin and the city council members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, the NAACP Champagne County Branch uh, continues to be concerned about the increase in gun violence that continues to hamper our community. I am speaking on behalf of the NAACP Champagne County Branch and I am the only speaker as the president. Uh, we, the NAACP, uh, understands the mayor's proposal to install cameras in the communities where gun violence is occurring is a novel idea. We are hopeful that the technology will have an impact on this violence in our communities, especially with the children, as you have just witnessed, which is heartbreaking. Not only were they hurt by COVID, but they are now being hurt by gun violence. And we, we have to agree. The NAACP Champagne County Branch have heard many concerns from the community, uh, and they voiced their opinions to the, uh, to the NAACP. One of which is that their constitutional rights and privacy rights might be violated. But every day, every day that there are gun violence in our communities, we walk around and our freedoms and our constitution is being infringed upon by gun violence. So we are ruled that way as well. We certainly hope that this is not the case and that, uh, the city and the mayor must put in place a policy that will clearly state and show that this will not happen. The NAACP branch is willing to host, or co-host, the mayor, uh, with the mayor and the city, a couple of town hall meetings in the black community to discuss gun violence and how this technology is going to be utilized in our community and explain why. Kind of a Q and A. We know, we know that this is really the best for our community right now. We can't keep doing the same things and expect different results. So the NAACP Champagne County Branch supports, uh, the mayor and her proposal to put cameras in those areas. And I know that there are people who have a lot to say on this, but you have to understand the, the lived experiences of people of color who are going through these things. It is nice to have your input from our white sisters and brothers, but understand, children are suffering, people are suffering, and they are not free to move about their community because of this gun violence. And it's hard for everybody, whether you are a senior citizen, whether you're going to your doctor's appointments or wherever you're going, you never know when you might meet with something that is going to harm you. So the NAACP does support placing the cameras. Now, I understand that there is a need for a town hall discussion on this, but we cannot wait, uh, for, uh, this to happen. That can come much, much later, right afterward, but right now we need to put those there in order to stop, slow down this gun violence that is, it's, it's ruining our education system. The children, it's ruining them. So we really need to do something. I know we don't have a lot of time to speak right now, but I truly support this. And so does the NAACP and there's only one spokesperson for the NAACP in this community and that's Minnie Pearson and I support it. Thank you so much for listening to me tonight and, uh, hopefully we will make the decision real soon to install the cameras. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pearson. Um, next is CK, I'm not sure if I can say that name, the name, Gonzalez?
Goncalis.
Goncalis, okay.
Oh, good ear. Thank you very much. I want to thank you all for your service and I also would like to say I signed into this meeting to hear your earlier meeting. And I'm really impressed with how respectfully you all deal with each other, even when it's clear that there are high feelings and disagreements among you. It was really, um, proud to see how you interact and represent us. So tonight I'd like to make three comments and ask the council to consider three actions with respect to the comprehensive plan about which you heard an update this evening. First comment is that I commend the energy going into the Imagine Urbana effort to reimagine a comprehensive plan effort. My concern is that in looking at the comprehensive plan effort and the changes that have occurred in it and the revisions over many decades, I worry that we are losing track of the institutional memory of consistently expressed concerns of Urbana's residents over time. I was on the Plan Commission during one of the major revisions to this comprehensive plan. And I think that we've lost our memory of the input that has been made to the city over and over from its residents from one year ago, five years ago, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, 20 years ago, 25 years ago, 30 years ago, 35 years ago, 40 years ago, I regret to tell you I was part of that, and 50 years ago, if you look at our records. So as part of this, I'd like to commend to you the council's attention, the comments that Lou Hopkins made in the September 23rd Plan Commission meeting. Starting at about 31 minutes into that meeting, he talked about the process and talked about in particular the changes since 2005. And I think it would be helpful for council members to hear and consider that as you oversee this process. So I have three requests I'd like to make that the council consider acting upon. One is I'd like to consider, suggest for your consideration that you separate the Imagine Urbana process from the Comprehensive Plan Revision Process and use a much, much more focused Comprehensive Plan Revision Process. And as part of a more focused Comprehensive Plan Revision Process, consistent with your staff recognition that Urbana neighborhoods have wildly different needs and there are many neighborhoods across Urbana, I think there's a clear need to bring, build better bridges to neighborhoods across the city. So I think it would be helpful for the city to reach out to neighborhoods with very well-advertised meetings focused on the planning and land use and comprehensive plan issues. And finally, my third request for your consideration is you direct the staff and Plan Commission to focus on these neighborhood plans that would then be linked to the overall comprehensive plan. People live in neighborhoods, people have neighborhood concerns, we're all residents of Urbana and we all share citywide concerns and people live in neighborhoods. So I thank you very much for your time. I thank you for your service and, um, that's all I have.
Thank you, um, CK, appreciate that. Um, next is Angel Johnson. Angel, you're muted? Or maybe it's...
Okay, can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Marlin and the rest of the crew. I would like to say that real quickly, first off, I spoke with, uh, Ms. Sheila Doss and she informed me that the reason that we never ever got a grant because we are home daycare, licensed daycare, and we have a, a licensed youth center in our home. I would like to speak to, uh, Mayor Marlin. I would like to change that and I would like to also know when was that law implemented that we pay taxes on our businesses in our home, but we're not able to receive funding from our community uh, for our businesses, being that COVID-19 has hit. We took a hit from our businesses, okay? And we was unable to get, uh, any grant money or any funding. Nothing is set aside. So you have the gambling machines here, you have all the, uh, millions of dollars that has came into our community and we was just x-ed out. She said they never have that, they don't have people in their home to remodel, fix up, you know, and I want to start that. I want to speak with the mayor and the city council. I want you guys to go in your chambers and talk about this and see where we could pull that funding from, for that, for people who own businesses and changing the community. We changed youth lives. We have doctors and lawyers and we have, um, police officers have came out of our business. We have sacrificed our funding. You know, we made good money and we sacrificed our funding and we pay taxes every year, every year. And so we go by every rule, every law, every right, everything. We go by just like a building, a, a model building that's out there, okay? Secondly, I would like to have more information on the cameras. How do the cameras work? Who will be in charge of the cameras before I say yes? I don't mind the cameras, but what and where the cameras will be installed? And how can we make sure that they're accurate of when they catch someone license plate? Would it be the right person and whoever behind watching and paying attention to this? Who's gonna be honest enough that they will not discriminate? Okay? So I just, I just have those questions and I like to say that also, can someone call me and tell me how can I get my mortgage paid again? They paid it one time. It wasn't a lot, but it was enough to help me to put more money with my mortgage. I didn't know we would still be going through the COVID at this time. I work every day, but things are going up so extremely high. Unfortunately, all the money is just being taken away because due to what? We, we went up on the food, you went up on gas, you went up on this, we went up on that and that's fine. Taxes went up. Okay, fine.
Yeah, taxes.
Yes, taxes went up. So come on now, y'all gotta help us too. And, and we're making changes and, and you know, but you guys are doing a great job. So I just want to say keep up the good work. Let's work as a community. That's what's most important and needed and our youth is very important. Let's get some, uh, metal detectors. I've been talking back and forth to the board of education for a better, uh, middle school and high school. I asked for these metal detectors six years ago. Let's go. Let's get it done because it's very critical today that we pay attention. Things are changing in Champagne about. We're not the cornfield city no more, okay? So God bless all of you. Take care.
Thank you, Angel.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next is Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, hi, I'm Tracy Chong. Um, so the city really cannot justify, um, the, their decisions, the decisions that were made, um, during, uh, the police collective bargaining contract, um, other than to repeat the same lies week after week. Uh, just tonight, we heard, uh, city attorney Dave Wesner, uh, we heard how he brought up the bona fide occupational qualification again to justify discrimination against an entire class of residents, to justify taking away the rights of an entire class of residents. This is the same lie that Urbana's puppet negotiator Ben Gert told to justify against this, to justify discriminating against anyone with a felony conviction. However, none of these attorneys can actually explain how a law related to labor and employment can actually apply to voluntary members of the Urbana Civilian Police Review Board. I hope that after I brought up this issue two weeks ago and called out Ben Gert's lie, at least some of you council members bothered to look up what the bona fide occupational qualification law says. Did any of you look it up? If yes, why did you let Dave Wesner lie to you and the public again? If not, shame on you. The public is doing research and telling you that you are being lied to and you don't even bother to do minimal research to gain the tiniest bit of awareness so that you know when parties with biased interests use lies to justify discrimination. Again, if I'm wrong about the bona fide occupational qualification, let me know. Say something. Don't just keep, sit there and keep quiet. Carol Mitten is still claiming that the removal of the first-person account requirement for filing a police complaint was a win for CPRB. She just said it again tonight that, um, this was part of the negotiation that resulted from the CPRBs' wants. Carol Mitten's lie, um, claims are dishonest. The first-person account requirement was never in the ordinance. It was always an invention by the Urbana Police Department to deny complaints. The police ultimately backed off from that invented requirement when it was brought to light that it was never in the ordinance. This is evidenced by the fact that they removed the first-person account requirement without an ordinance change. Week after week, you guys continue to let Mayor Marlin, city administrator, city administrator Carol Mitten, police leadership and whoever they hire to give so-called legal advice. You let them lie to you and the public. You let them lie to justify discrimination and to justify police misconduct. Why? Thank you.
Sorry, I was just saying, thank you, Ms. Chong. Next is Julie Watkins.
Hello, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, I hope everyone is safe and continues to be safe. As other people have been saying, people in danger of eviction are not safe, not them, not for the rest of us. When evictions will mean more people getting and spreading COVID, please contact the sheriff. I hope individual council members and the council as a whole will also advise no evictions. My main point, I want to thank Frances Rigberg again for her input last week. I recommend anyone who didn't hear it to listen to on the UP TV six Urbana City Council YouTube for September 27th. It starts about one hour, 27 minutes and a half. The videos on the Urbana City website allow play and pause, but not forward and back. So go to YouTube. She said it much better than I farballed last week. It is also context for the first presentation for tonight. I believe Urbana should follow its own ordinances and not discriminate. I think the local FOP members should think long and hard about why prior conviction is a protected class in the city of Urbana. Listen again to Frances Rigberg's statement. Are you going to keep insisting on your so-called right to discriminate? Just because you keep saying over and over again, it isn't discrimination, doesn't make it not discrimination. Listen to the negotiator's so-called explanation. That's on the September 13th video, starting at time mark about one hour 42 minutes. He said, if you're a bank robber, you don't get to work for a bank. He said that it's a bona fide occupational qualification exception. And he said, in order to police the police, you cannot have a felony conviction. All of those statements are statements. They're not a defense of the exception and they don't answer the issues that Frances Rigberg listed on, in her statement. As I said last week, I'm hoping to hear a defense of how it's a bona fide occupational qualit- qualification exemption from a local FOP member, other than FOP says so. I also recommend Chris Evans' statement at that same meeting, September 13th, which starts about two hours and five minutes. Thank you for your consideration of this manner.
Keep forgetting to unmute, sorry. Um, thank you, Julie. Next is Mary Pat McGuire.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Uh, I just want to uh to um share some thoughts on the comprehensive plan topic that was covered this evening and just at a very high level to share some thoughts on that subject. And also, I'm sorry, I should have said I'm Mary Pat McGuire and I'm at eight oh four West Nevada in Urbana. Um, I also am a member of the design review board here in Urbana. And um I wanted to share that I um am not, I'm very curious actually about the the Imagine Urbana system or that process and how um that input or that engagement process is really connected to the comprehensive plan development and how that engagement can actually inform the comprehensive plan itself. Um, I think the engagement process is terrific, but I just at a really practical level, I'm curious and interested in what the actual process of developing the comp plan will be. And um, and I'm thinking a lot here about uh Lily Wilcox's excellent point she's been making about the plan assessment and its highlight of how the comp plan going forward really needs to benefit the different neighborhoods and that we need this kind of overall guiding policy and planning document that can help us with um what we will probably be a lot of challenging decisions about trans- transforming our city and moving forward through a lot of accelerated pressures. However, we need um to really focus on the diverse needs across neighborhoods. And so how those different pieces are fitting together at different scales just isn't really clear at this moment and it would be um nice to hear something about that process. Um, I also strongly support that we are working simultaneously on a set of neighborhood or maybe we could think about them as district level plans um relative to aggregate issues in certain parts of our city. Um, and as one example, and I'm just gonna cite something in West Urbana. I know there are very many um challenging issues all over our city. One example we have currently that's very relevant to this uh multi-scale planning process is um here in West Urbana, we have a burgeoning issue of the R seven district. And um this is a number of properties that compose a significant part of West Urbana. It's an outdated zoning designation that needs to be revisited and the fate of these properties is really not clear, but it it bears on the future of this uh of the Lincoln Corridor. And so this is an example of a district issue that fits into a larger urban comprehensive planning process having to do with land use, zoning, possible rezoning, uh preservation, which the city is um highlighting in this uh zone, in this district, pardon me. Um, and then also what does redevelopment look like along the corridor um given those properties? So this plays also not into just preservation, but what is the affordability of mix of, of um housing options here? Um, so I'm really interested in all of that as a kind of um and that, those connections. So we need a clear process, or at least we on the outside need to understand or are very interested in how all those pieces come together. And lastly, I'm interested in what other uh commissions and boards are helping to inform that process. So for example, um, how is the Sustainability Advisory Commission involved in comprehensive planning? And as a design review board member, I'm interested in um how the guidelines that came out of the two thousand and five plan, um, how can those be re-envisioned as well to support um not just reviewing design, you know, districts, but how can they be um can also assist in, in thinking about the future of the comprehensive plan as a whole? So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much, Mary Pat. Next is Eddie Pratt Jr.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me clear?
Yes, well, kind of.
Oh, hold on. Give me one second.
Your time is gone, Eddie.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right, all right, all right. So let's get down to brass tacks, shall we? I lost about a good twenty seconds. Um, so in a matter of these, these cameras in which um to be completely honest, this, it, it doesn't fit the purpose. If we're deploying cameras in the, in the, the sense of wanting to deter violent crime, um, I have some things to share with you all. So uh some information from the Municipal Technical Advisory Service Institute for Public Service published this only a couple of years ago about uh crime and cameras. Is there empirical evidence that surveillance cameras reduce crime? Based on the papers, articles and reports reviewed, it seems that CCTV is most of, most effective when combined with other crime reducing slash deterring methods such as improved lighting, security guards and defensible space. So let's go a little further. So um there's, there's mention of about fifteen different reports and I don't have time to go through all of them, but I'm gonna summarize a good bit of them. So uh we have reports from every bit from every state here in the country, all the way to uh as far as Sweden. And they have common denominators in which they all have the commonated, the common denominator being that they conclude that cameras did not deter violent crime. Where it was successful at deterring crime was crime involving property, theft, burglary, but only when paired with infrastructural improvements. You know, the one thing that we're lacking here in this community, um, lights. So you could almost argue to say that if we were to try to make a real stride in public safety, we would look towards uh strengthening our infrastructure first before going to something that has been uh proven to not be effective. This is a reactive thing that we have to reckon with that. I understand that people are hurting right now and they are living through this trauma. I understand this because I too am living here. I too, I've lived through this in Detroit as a kid, growing up in the nineties. So like I, I'm reliving this. This is peeling off old scabs for me every day. But at the same time, we gotta be honest, this is not the way forward. It's not. And to do this before bringing it to the community is egregious. I mean, honestly, I mean, this is something, we're, we're talking about mass surveillance here. Everyone in this community has a stake in that and the opportunity should be had by the community first to buy in before you decide what is good for them. This is their community and it should be represented in every iota of policy decision-making. Good night.
Thank you, Eddie Pratt Jr. Okay, next is Colin Dodson.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
My name is Colin. I'm a resident of Ward Two in Urbana and former city council candidate for this ward and organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. We are facing down an urgent humanitarian crisis, a crisis of evictions. Um, even under normal circumstances internationally, housing is recognized as a fundamental human right. And it's doubly so during a pandemic and we still are in a pandemic. New COVID cases right now are very similar in number to the same time last year when we were still in the middle of a peak. And November was the worst month of all for the entire country or county, sorry. Now, um, I know a common refrain to this is that there, you know, there's a lot of aid money from federal, you know, stimulus packages available to pay for rent assistance. And that's good. That's great. But if anything, I think this should be an argument for preventing evictions rather than opposing eviction moratorium. Because what that means to me is if all that money is available, that means landlords will be paid, banks will be paid. And that removing people from their homes for non-payment of rent is nothing but unnecessary cruelty. And that being said, there are too many barriers to the aid programs that exist. I've looked into these. You know, I've tried to go through the application process and what I've found is that the Regional Planning Commission and the township, neither of them have posted hours of operation anywhere available. Um, calling the phone number to the Regional Planning Commission was ultimately unhelpful as all I got was an automated message informing me to download the application from their website. I had already downloaded the application. The problem was that many of uh many things about the application were unclear. I had questions that needed answered and there was no clear way to get those answers. The only way that we got answers is when a friend went in person, waiting in line, again, in the middle of a pandemic, to get those answers. Now, thi- this is a little bit of a problem considering that time and transportation is not guaranteed for all Urbana residents. And that's especially the case for those who are at the most imminent risk for eviction. So trying to be productive here and suggesting solutions, uh some things that could help here is one um to provide human operators to answer questions at the Regional Planning Commission that are easily accessible when you call the line, press zero for the operator, whatever it takes like that. And then two, to avoid excess calls, provide a frequently asked questions section, an FAQ, in an easily accessible place right next to the application download. Now, nearly five thousand people are at risk of eviction in this county alone. And removing housing stability will threaten public health and exacerbate the pandemic. And it will also likely increase gun violence in our community. Further, Urbana prides itself on having one of the most progressive human rights ordinances in the state. But housing insecurity already disproportionately impacts already marginalized communities, especially Black and LGBT communities. Allowing evictions to proceed will only make the situation worse. So I urge the council, please call on the sheriff not to carry out evictions and please improve the processes for gaining the aid necessary to ensure that existing outstanding obligations are met. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Colin. Next. Next is Alan Axelrod.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so uh bank robber doesn't work for the bank, hey? Well, uh, there happens to be a person named Frank Abagnale Jr. who was a prolific Czech fraudster and was then hired by the FBI. So let's just acknowledge sayings for the lack of intelligence behind them, shall we? Now, with regards to the camera situation, there's a disturbing part in addition to the surveillance that has yet to be talked about and let's deal with that. The ability to store and recall that information. You, if you adopt this thing, because we know there's a limited ability to convince you from reactionary behaviors, must include the ability to log who searches what. Let me tell you why. The McLean County Democratic Party gave me an apology earlier this year. Why did they do that? Well, in December of last year, specifically on Christmas, I was accused of being a Republican operative sent from Florida to go after Governor J B Pritzker. Now, there's an interesting thing there in the conversation, which is I didn't actually move from Florida to Illinois. I moved from Oklahoma to Illinois, but I was an absentee voter in Florida. And so I was able to surmise the fact that this was a McLean County Democratic Party precinct committee person abusing their access to voter address history and I called them out and they admitted it. So let's now reflect that you will have police officers in charge of looking up camera information whenever they please. Please have that information logged. I'll give you an example of how much I don't trust the police. When I was driving to the county building during my lunch hour, a police vehicle with the license plate U three zero zero six seven ran three stop signs consecutively. They don't follow the law. They don't enforce it equitably. How many different examples are we gonna have to give you? The gaslit our vulnerable residents when asking for help when their landlord is being overly abusive. How many examples is it gonna take? Also, um, for those who don't know about anti-terror research, the Swiss government, I believe Switzerland, their government, had actually done a study of different approaches for how to handle uh folks who had returned from Syria that they could not prove were in ISIS at one point. I'm bringing this up because it is extreme, but I'm bringing it up because also the research is relevant and applies. So what they found was that the French model of reacting in an enforcement capacity was way less effective than the Denmark model. In Denmark, they actually paired people up with mentoring programs at scale. They helped people not be treated like criminals and terrorists. And it worked quite better. But they noted in their report that they didn't have the political will in their country, so they probably would like to do some mix of the two. So yeah, that's an interesting report. Now, the other thing that I want to note in the context of all of this is that you all have signed on to in past capacities and a moratorium against utility shut-offs as the city council of Urbana. That's because utility shut-offs de-housed people without an eviction and it caused increases in caseloads. The IDPH reported that the Delta coronavirus strain was here in April, but it wasn't until two weeks after Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program ended at the end of June that we started seeing our cases increase in July. Recognize the severity of the situation and follow on those calls to action. Good night.
Thank you, Alan. Next is Colum Wilson.
Hello.
Hello.
My, my name's Colum and I'm a member of the Civilian Police Review Board. Um, earlier today, you heard from Carla Boyd about an ordinance change. Now, we strongly believe that felons should be able to serve on the CPRB. Our, our mission is to improve community police interaction and we believe that this is an important step. In that same section, um, section D encourages board member diversity in income, age, gender and key experience. Now, it goes without saying that someone with a felony probably has a unique viewpoint to bring the discussion and we, we feel we need that viewpoint, but it's complicated. Carol Mitten mentioned that we don't understand the totality of the circumstances and, and she's right. Um, I'm echoing Julie Watkins' comment from last meeting, but I, I mean, I'd like to get the police's feelings on this issue. Why do the police not want felons serving the CPRB? I, my experience is that the police have good reasons for doing the things they do. And so I'd, I'd like to hear from UPD in this case. Relying on prior felonies to weed out bad actors on the CPRB probably isn't the best way to go forward. Instead, instead, I believe we should trust the mayor and her choices and to trust all the parties who give input along the way. Now, lastly, I want to say thanks to Grace Wilkin um for attending one of our previous CPRV meetings and speaking out to us. Um, for our part, we will also try to open more lines of communication. We'll need to continue working together to make even small changes. Anyway, thanks for your time. I know this has been a very long meeting. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Colum. Next is George.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Great. So my name is George. I'm a resident of Urbana. I'm deeply concerned about the ongoing eviction crisis that has ensued following the Supreme Court's recent ruling to strike down the CDC moratorium on evictions and Governor Pritzker's failure to extend a statewide moratorium. As of yesterday, these decisions have put almost five thousand families across the county at risk of being kicked out of their homes, many of whom do live in Urbana. I'm here today to urge all elected members of the Urbana City Council to take a stand and demonstrate leadership in this crisis by calling on the sheriff to pass a local moratorium on evictions. Our sheriff, Dustin Huerman, has the unilateral power to refuse to prosecute evictions. With the stroke of a pen, he could prevent the worsening of the COVID nineteen pandemic and protect families facing eviction, struggling businesses and just all members of our community. This sort of action is not unprecedented either. The Cook County Sheriff did something similar at the start of the pandemic and it worked great up there. The city council may not have the authority to directly prohibit evictions, but you do have the authority and the imperative to pass a resolution urging the sheriff to act. Evictions will be disastrous for our community. They'll hurt folks from all walks of life. I know people in a range of different circumstances who are dealing with a threat of eviction. Folks who can't sleep at night from the stress, folks who are working hard but can't make enough to pay rent or deal with a debt accrued during the pandemic. Evictions aren't good for tenants. They aren't good for landlords. They aren't good for public health, and they certainly aren't good for our community as a whole. We're going through another large spike in COVID cases right now, and evictions will make controlling the virus that much harder. It is possible to bounce back from the pandemic. But that's only going to be possible with decisive action. Please take a stand to protect your constituents from evictions and publicly, both as individuals and as representatives on this council, call on the sheriff to refuse prosecute evictions. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Next is Linda Turnbull.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, how are you guys doing tonight? First of all, I want to thank everybody that's sitting on that board that does the things they need to do to keep our community safe and make good decisions. And make the decisions because that's why we elected you for you to make the decisions. But also I want to piggyback off of Minnie Pearson and whoever else spoke on, in support of the cameras. Cameras are a good resource, I believe, because right now, I live in a neighborhood where houses are being shot up. Husband has to lay on top of his wife to keep his wife from getting killed. A lady that I know for a long time went to her door, had nothing to do with it, got shot five times. Hallelujah. I cannot even sleep by my door without thinking about that. I mean, I would put a camera in my yard if I could, hallelujah, because it is so, the gun violence is so serious now. I mean, it's been serious, but it's really gotten out of hand. Not only that, we don't have time to wait, just like Centennial put them installed the metal detectors. They didn't wait for no public hearing. They didn't wait for nothing. They just did it because it's time for that. Because right now, it's a security if issue. It's a safety issue, hallelujah. Once you have experienced gun violence and it's been around you and it's been in your family, you would have a totally different outlook of this. And you would think differently. You would get whatever it needs to get and you'll get it right away. You wouldn't be doing a lot of talking, the waiting this and that, more lives are being taken. You need to do to keep the people safe. Hallelujah. And the people that we put in office, they will make decisions to keep the people safe. Because this is serious. We cannot keep waiting. As we wait, more lives are taken. Hallelujah. Right now is the time that we have to step forward and do something. Just not talk, just not wait, but do something. Yeah, like I said, the cameras are only like a one-year contract. Let's see what it does. We can't say what those cameras want to do. Ran two, helped catch a guy that was shooting up there and came down here and the whole mother was murdered. Uh, girlfriend was shot and paralyzed. Hallelujah. You can't say them cameras is not doing anything. Every time something happens in our city, the first thing they say on TV, anybody have camera? They got footage because people are not talking and they won't talk. They are afraid. We can't keep waiting. We have to do something, just like Minnie said. Hallelujah. Please look into it and, and make a good decision on this. Some of this stuff that some people are saying, hallelujah, weigh it out. Keep us safe. I have been dramatized. I'm just gonna say it right here. I've been dramatized. Hallelujah. Out of a neighborhood, somebody got shot down the street, two or three people killed. Around the corner, houses got shot up. Husband has to lay on top of his wife to keep her from getting killed. Hallelujah. Please do something. We cannot wait. You guys have a nice evening.
Thank you, Linda. Next is Harath Kambatsi. I hope I, sorry if I mispronounced your name.
That's all right. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, my name is Harath Kambatsi. I live in Urbana. Um, I'm also an organizer with the Party for Socialism Liberation. Um, and I want to talk today about evictions. It's a thing that's already been talked about. But it is an imminent crisis facing our community. Right now, at least 4,600 households across Champaign County could be at risk of eviction any day now. Eviction, the eviction moratorium expired yesterday, which means this threat is upon us at this moment. And the Party for Socialism Liberation here has been carrying out a campaign over the past month to gather support for an extended eviction moratorium. Been calling on the sheriff of Champaign County, Dustin Heuerman, to refuse to carry out evictions. And also seeing if people in the community need help, uh, filling out rental assistance. And in this process, we've, you collected, we've gotten support from hundreds of people across Champaign, Urbana. We've also spoke to a lot of people in the community who are deeply in fear of being evicted. Uh, we, we've, we've heard a lot of painful stories of people who have been unfairly treated by landlords, people who are down on their luck, uh, and people who have been going through the established support systems. Just yesterday, I talked to someone in Urbana who expressed that they were deeply afraid of being evicted because they had filled out their ERA application months ago and they hadn't heard a thing. So there is the established structures to help people who are behind on rents and mortgages clearly aren't doing what they need to do. And the immediate action that needs to be taken is to say no more evictions will be carried out in Champaign County. That is a thing that Dustin Heuerman, the sheriff of Champaign County can do unilaterally. The, we are part of a national campaign called Cancel the Rents Calling for the cancellation of rent and mortgage debt nationwide, which is the only thing that will get us out of this long-term eviction crisis. But that is something that the federal government needs to act on. The federal government has dropped the ball. The state government has dropped the ball. The onus is now on us at the local level to act, specifically on Dustin Heuerman. He can decide any day now, unilaterally, that will, there will be no evictions. As has been mentioned, there is precedent for this. It's been done in other places. Um, and it's, and I understand that local officials like yourselves don't have the same amount of power to act on these things, which is why it's so important that we put pressure on the sheriff to act. Uh, I would urge all of you to reach out in your capacities as, as public officials, as elected officials, to call on the sheriff to not carry out evictions. This will be a crisis of human rights, a public health crisis, a public safety crisis. You have seen in other places, the expiration of eviction moratoriums has led to spikes in COVID cases, spikes in gun violence. Thousands and thousands of people in our community could be thrown onto the streets. We have to act on this. We have to put people before property. And I would urge all of you to consider what can be done at this level to protect our residents against evictions and to call upon the sheriff to use his unilateral power to protect our community against mass evictions, against mass homelessness, against these things that will put not only those being evicted at risk, but, but put everyone at risk through these effects will reverberate across our community. Thank you for your time. I urge all of you to act, continue talking about this. Keep fighting against evictions in our community until we know that everyone is safe and in, and in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Harath. Next is, um, Sarah Nixon.
Hello, City Council. This is Sarah Nixon. I join those Urbana voices who are calling upon you to soundly and firmly reject the proposal to turn Urbana into a big brotherhood dystopia. I'm calling upon you to enact ordinances instead that will both prohibit the use of ALPR surveillance and promote community engagement, oversight, and extensive transparency for the implementation of any future law enforcement surveillance technology. People are traumatized, terrorized, and panicking right now. And that is never a sound place from which to make big decisions. The fear is huge, but it clouds judgment. The refrain from a vocal handful is do something. We cannot wait. We cannot wait. So then don't wait. Vote instead to empower the people. Focus the funds, for example, on equipping, uh, willing and participating neighborhood watch households in targeted or in and near targeted communities with their own surveillance cameras. Mass state surveillance via ALPR disempowers the people. Hand that power back to the community where it belongs. As well, clearly Minnie Pearson does not speak for all members of the African-American community. Over the past week, I spoke with members of Rantoul's African-American community. What they shared with me exposes that the presentation you were given left out some vital facts. The plan to install Flock ALPRs in Rantoul was covert. It was carried out entirely behind the scenes with no public notice nor input. It was never even put before the village board, uh, and put to a vote. In fact, the rental residents I spoke with were envious of Urbana because our city council is actually being consulted. My friends in Rantoul stated that when the village administration was confronted about their deception, their response was, yes, we know that we should have put this before the board, but we decided it would be easier to do a mea culpa later than ask for permission first. And Flock stood by while they did this. Next, Mr. Murdock from Flock stated to the council last week that Flock is quote, "working with ACLU." But in fact, the ACLU is raising loud alarms about ALPRs and specifically about Flock's ALPRs. Just last month, the ALCU of Rhode Island called on the city councils of Cranston, Pot Hackett, and Woonsocket to direct the respective police departments to halt the use of automated license plate readers, a reader technology leased from the company Flock Safety. In a letter sent to the city council and mayor of each municipality, the ALCU expressed concerns about the serious privacy issues such technologies can pose to all residents and noted that these systems were inappropriately installed on a trial basis in the absence of any public notice, input, or statutory, statutory guidance. The, the ALCU's detailed letter points out that when police surveillance techniques like these ALPRs are promoted, they often imply a false choice between public safety and privacy. But public safety is the result of community-based tools and systems that directly and tangibly support residents. It is not and has never been a consequence of indiscriminate 24/7 surveillance. To, to suggest that such surveillance technology is only a threat to those committing crimes is dismissive of the legitimate privacy and safety concerns that all residents have, and particularly ignores how police surveillance over the decades has often targeted communities in a discriminatory manner. I don't know how much time I am at, eight seconds. Um, so I'll have to leave it there.
Thank you, Sarah. Next. Or was she the last? Oh. Alexander Rogers.
Hello, uh, my name is Alexander Rogers. I'm a resident of Urbana. And, uh, just apologies in advance. I just got off an 11-hour shift, so if my thoughts are a little bit convoluted, I'll apologize. I'll try to, try to make myself as cogent as possible. Today, I'd like to talk about the imminent health and safety crisis that is the ending of the Illinois State Moratorium. Uh, it is apparent to me that thousands of, of Urbana and Champaign residents will lose their home and/or be evicted as a result of this moratorium. Uh, this is going to lead to a crisis on multiple levels. As we know, the people without homes and people that are, you know, materially destitute and/or unable to provide for themselves are more likely to engage in crime. This is going to ultimately be a butterfly effect that will start from the, the smallest portion of affected members and resonate out to all swathes of the community. Um, as people have said before, this is something that can be done or, or can be, be, uh, levied for at this level, obviously not at the same power that the sheriff Dustin, uh, can, can ultimately levy for. But, uh, I urge you all to, to demand that he stop processing evictions, um, during this time. I, someone else was speaking about, about cameras and about public health and safety, and I suppose I'll throw in my two cents to that as well. Um, I would broadly agree that, you know, increasing the extent to which the Champaign-Urbana community is, is a surveillance state ultimately increases the paranoia, decreases the, the wellbeing and sense of wellbeing that people have in, in their, in their homes and their neighborhoods, and is ultimately not a complete solution to any sort of public health or safety problem. Um, this is something that we should be addressing systemically at the root and, and merely putting up cameras does not, does not stop the gun violence, does not stop the crime, um, just in the same way that, uh, uh, you know, merely persecuting or prosecuting the people that are committing crime does not actually get at the, at the root of the problem. One of these roots is going to be the, the end of the moratorium and the eventual and, and continued eviction of people from their homes. As long as this is going to continue, I see the Champaign-Urbana community as in a state of crisis. And I call on all of you to do your part and to be responsible civil servants and, uh, advocate for the right thing, basically. Cause i- if not, uh, I, I can't see how we can go on saying that, that we're serving our community and, and that we're doing our due deal, due, due diligence. I think that's all I had to say tonight. Thank you all for your time. Like I said, I've been Alexander Rogers, Urbana resident. Have a nice night, y'all.
Thank you, Alexander. Um, Arthur Paganini.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'll wait for my time to start. Hey, um, so yeah, I also just got off a really long day, so I'll do my best here. Um, you know, I, I hear a lot of talk about, um, about like what we want to put money into in this community. And, um, you know, I was, yesterday I went to, um, to Southeast Urbana um, because I was, the eviction moratorium is coming up, and so I was, you know, trying to reach people about, um, to see, you know, like who's getting evicted, you know, who needs rental assistance. And out of the 50 people I spoke to that answered the door, um, there are about 10 people who were getting rent assistance. Seven of them directly asked um, me and the people that I was with for help. You know, these are like, I mean, these are like people, man, like they, like they just need help with rent, you know, they don't like, you know, they're having, like, they're just having a rough time, especially with this pandemic, like people have lost their jobs, you know? I don't want to say any names to say who anyone is, but one of the, one of the people said they lost their jobs and they don't want to tell their landlord because they're afraid they might get evicted, like right away. Um, you know, there's a, there's this homeless person that, that hangs around the co-op. I don't know if you've seen him a lot down in downtown Urbana, but he came up to me the other day and he said that he got beat up by a bunch of teenagers that they, um, um, they kicked him and they like, you know, they kicked him around, you know? It makes me sad, like homeless, homelessness is not like, you know, it's just not like, it's not just like a lack of a home, you know, it's like you, you don't have anything. You don't have access to drinking water. You don't have a place to sleep at night. You don't have like a family that can stay with you. You know, if you don't have family, like where do you go? Um, and this whole like talk of cameras honestly just, it just makes me really mad because, um, like we're, what we're saying is we don't have money to put people in homes. We can't put people in homes. We can't feed these people. But we have enough money to, to, uh, to pay Amazon millions of dollars for their Ring doorbells to put in these communities where these people already don't have infrastructure. These people already do not have a lot of these, like essential services, but we have the money to buy like Ring doorbells. I just, I don't, I don't, it doesn't make sense to me. I under, look, I, you know, I, I'm not saying that I have all the answers to like solve crime. I'm not saying that, you know, I value everyone's opinion who's coming in to speak today. But I just feel like there has to be a better way of addressing these issues than just buying, like than just buying cameras. I know someone earlier said putting up streetlights. I think just even things like that, things that like improve like the, the community itself, you know, like improve the places that these people live and not just like more surveillance, but that's just my, that's just my opinion. I, I cede my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur. Okay, Drake Matier.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, Drake.
All right. Uh, my name is Drake Matier, uh, resident of Champaign. First year grad student at the U of I in the Masters of Public Health. Someone said earlier today, people over property. And I will always say people over property, especially in this instance when we're talking about. And I will always say, "people over property," especially in this instance when we're talking about security cameras, which I believe the city is in the process of trying to privatize surveillance. First of all, surveillance in the sense of stopping crime has been proven to not work. Maybe property crime, again, people over property, but not violent crime. I know that there are cameras also on campus, but yet sexual assault is so rampant. I am from Chicago where 32,000 security cameras implemented in 2018 has shown to be not the best idea in deterring violence, as we have seen violent crime rates increase across not just here in Champaign, the state, or this country, but the world. People are dealing with heightened levels of stress, anxiety, depression because of the political instability and because of the unforeseen future that will be detrimental if we do not act now. That future is actually now, the one that we've all feared, the one that we've all said, what will happen? Is climate change real? What's gonna happen when this happens? Evictions are going on now. Are we going to put cameras on evicted households? What about the connection between gun violence and homelessness? Where families who, let's say, have been visited by gun violence at their doorstep, at their housing, they end up losing their housing and having to remain homeless until a landlord approves or deems them viable for housing. And what about those children that are homeless, let homeless, that are neglected not only by the powers that be, but also by the community that shouldn't be fighting for them? Not saying increasing more cameras, as if everybody black here is falling for the black-on-black crime trope, so we must increase surveillance of our people. I say no to that. I'm against any further criminalization of these young black boys. Yes, boys, they are human. Black people have been fighting not for identity but being, and there's something profound even in comedy adult cartoons. There was an episode in South Park where Stan, a white boy, kept trying to tell Token, the Token black guy, that he wanted to understand, that he couldn't understand, that he just wanted to understand, he doesn't understand. But it wasn't until that he finally understood that he will never understand, did he understand how he can be a true advocate for the people. I'm a black man, I do not know what it means to be a black woman, I don't know the experience. I also don't know the experience of being a domestic violence survivor or victim. But I know one of the first things that I was taught, even through advocacy through the university, but also through the home, but also through friends and comrades, that when I'm standing there with somebody who is a survivor and they are coming to me about their story, the first thing I always say is that I would never understand. But because I don't understand and I see that you are in pain, I will work with you, not act in a form of reactionary order. We must act to stop violence, and cameras do not do that, and evictions sure do not do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Drake, and Serena Dodge will be our last person because we have to move on with the business of the city. Sweetie, we can't hear you. Where did she go?
Insta, we just need cameras, it's the best thing, and that's all I would like to say.
Serena, we didn't hear you earlier.
Oh, sorry. Okay. I don't care what nobody say, we need cameras, people are getting shot without cam- with-
Okay, you're breaking up. We can't hear you, sweetie.
And nobody knows where the killer is, nobody knows, because there's no surveillance, nobody can know. You just have to look through clues, that's not gonna work. You need to get these cameras so we can see who is doing all this, because that isn't gonna stop anything. You just need to get them cameras. Please, thank you, bye.
Thank you, Serena. Okay.
We did have another hand up still from a phone number.
And when do we start public input?
Eight fifty-six, so you'll need a vote to extend.
I would motion to extend public comments 10 minutes.
Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, this is the last person. With the number ending four, three, five. Hello, you need to unmute, thank you.
Hello, this is Eldridge Melinda Carr, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Marlin and the council members. I just wanted to, I did bring this information to the Minister of Science of Champaign-Urbana of the City, which I am president, but tonight I'm coming as a personal resident of Urbana. And due to the, you know, the security cameras and the license plate recognition system that is being discussed, and I just wanted to say, of course, weep with those who have been impacted by crime and, you know, had loved ones killed and things that just haven't recently. And so we pray for the families. I wanted to say that I know in Decatur, they just implemented that, but it was in high-crime areas. So if that's gonna be done and if that's implemented, it must be evenly distributed. And I think I heard that maybe last week, not just in high-crime areas, all over the city for it to be fairly done and to avoid racial profiling and disparities, which, you know, Urbana has just gone through, and the chief presented a report. And we've been going through this for several years with the disparities. So it cannot just be done in certain areas, it's gotta be done fairly distributed across the area, Urbana neighborhood. And I was doing just a little research, California Auditor Support 2020 on for this jurisdiction, use of this technology, that's the license plate technology. The data collected is primarily not related to individuals suspected of crimes. Many agencies did not implement privacy-protective oversight measures despite laws requiring it. Several agencies did not have documented usage or retention policies. It goes on, there's some things in Vermont related to audits at the state level. So I am looking at it from this wider scope of abuse. And for example, we sent in a letter related to what happened on campus because the misuse of the political, or the political, the database on campus and the security campus by, security cameras by a law enforcement official. And so we have to make sure that if this is done, it has to be evenly distributed across the neighborhoods. And there must be absolute oversight over this, and I think someone said logged. And it has to be done based on criminal acts that have been discovered and such as what is done at banks, that is posted publicly. And people can see that, okay, that someone has been, you know, robbed, you know, done something and the public, the community sees it. It cannot be just within the police area. It has to be publicly done, you know, processed. So for it to be a viable process, to be changed, it has to be done. There's too much mistrust, and we're not saying all police are doing that, we're saying we need the police. We're saying that there's still some things that are going on and we must do it in a way that is fairly done, not that continued, you know, profiling may happen in the future. So we have to do this fairly, if we're gonna do something like this, and it has to be done so the community is able to see. So down the line, we're not back where we were, you know, five or 10 years ago.
Thank you, Melinda.
Is my time up?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just hearing beeps, I didn't hear anything else.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Wayne Williams. Okay, you're the last one, Wayne, because we do have to move on.
Wayne? Can you hear me okay? Hi, my name is Wayne Williams, I'm a resident of Werf Five. I don't support surveillance cameras in my neighborhood or any other neighborhood. However, I am very troubled by the most recent violence in our shared community. And after thinking about it for a very long time, I do support the automatic license plate readers. I think that, you know, we're at the point where we need to try something. It's the automatic license plate readers are not as intrusive as cameras, which I don't support. I would also like, and implementing the automatic license plate readers, that you really, when you look at your funding sources, even, I would really like you to look deep and instead of taking money from just one part of the budget, really, really look at taking from, if there's any money left over in the police budget. Because if you're gonna do this, I think that's the appropriate place in the budget for the funds to come. So I do support the license plate readers, I do not support surveillance cameras, thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. And that is the end of our public input. Next on the agenda, staff reports, do we have any staff reports tonight?
I'm gonna save my staff report for next week, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Next, we have resolution number two-one-two-zero-one-dash-zero-nine-dash-zero-four-three-R. Resolution approving the Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, Habitat Cho'do Developer FY 2020. And Braden is here, hello.
Yes, good evening, can everyone hear me okay? So as the lead entity of the Urbana Home Consortium, the city of Urbana is responsible for executing agreements with community housing development organizations, which are also known as Cho'dos. The Cho'do agreement that's before you tonight is between the City of Urbana and Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County, which is certified as a Cho'do. Under the terms of this agreement, which is attached in your packet, the consortium will grant $24,802 in Cho'do project funds to Habitat for Humanity for the construction of one affordable housing unit located at 1112 North Champaign Street in Champaign. These funds were originally part of a larger allocation to First Followers for the creation of affordable rental units for low-income individuals. However, First Followers had a change in the scope of their project, and they ended up not needing the entire grant amount. They determined that they only required $29,998 to successfully complete their program. So the balance of that grant that was originally given to First Followers, the $24,802, needs to be reallocated to another project to ensure that the funds are not deobligated by HUD. As a result, city staff reached out to Habitat and requested that they submit an application for an eligible project so as to ensure that these funds can remain local and continue to further affordable housing in the community. So home funds come from HUD, and the city of Urbana manages the home funds as a pass-through agency. What that means is that there will be no change to the city general fund as a direct result of executing the proposed agreement. All requests for grant funding are made on a reimbursement schedule as well. So the options before you tonight are to approve the resolution authorizing an agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County to reallocate these Cho'do funds and place this item on the consent agenda, to approve the resolution authorizing an agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County to reallocate the Cho'do funds with suggested changes, or to not approve the resolution and to return the funds to HUD. It is the recommendation of staff as well as the Community Development Commission that city council approve the resolution that is approving a developer agreement with Habitat. So that is my presentation, thank you. Are there any questions? Yes.
Mary Alice?
Yeah, thank you. Real quickly, Brendan, so the First Followers' money was supposed to be used for affordable rental units, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And do you know how many affordable rental units they were able to create based on the funds that we, that they did spend?
Yeah, the project was for two affordable rental units.
And so did they not do any affordable rental units?
No, they did, they were able to complete their project, and because that scope changed, they didn't need the entire grant amount.
Okay, all right, and then this would go to Habitat, which is also kind of under the umbrella of affordable housing.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for the update, and I'm still not really clear what the situation was here. So my question was if you could just give us a little more information when you said that they completed the project and then the scope changed. Because when I contacted leadership at First Followers, they were really confused about this ordinance, wanted to make it clear that they were not, you know, returning or turning down money. So if you could kind of clarify a little bit about this, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, they're not turning down or returning any money. The original grant amount for the project, just the scope of it was not, they didn't end up needing that entire amount. So that's totally fine, there's nothing wrong with that, it's just that any funding that's not committed to a project, HUD will take back at the end of the project period. So in order to prevent that from happening, and so we can keep any money local, we reached out to Habitat to see if they had any projects so that we could, you know, again, keep that money here in the community.
Okay, any more questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion, and I'm not gonna make a motion for the consent agenda because we only have two things on this agenda. So I'll move that we send this to city council with the recommendation for approval, resolution number 2021-09043-R. Resolution approving the Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organizational Agreement for Habitat Cho'do Developer for, I don't know what P stands for, but PY 2020.
Project year.
Project year, thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what that was either, I thought FA. Second, James? Okay. Discussion? Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, next is an ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine dash zero four four. An ordinance revising the FY twenty twenty-two annual budget, budget amendment number three. This is from HR and Finance.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the mayor wanted to say a few words before I explain this.
Okay, Mayor Marlin?
Thanks, Elizabeth. Yes, I wanted to, um, since this ordinance is related to the purchase of, proposed purchase of the license plate readers, I think it's important to summarize, um, what we're talking about, what they, what we think they will do, what we know they will not do before we start this, this discussion. So I appreciate Wayne Williams distinguishing between a surveillance camera and license plate readers. These are not, we are not proposing to purchase surveillance cameras. They will not record audio or video. These are not ring doorbells, nor do we claim that it will um stop gun violence. What we're proposing is a purchase of license plate readers that takes a real-time snapshot of the rear of vehicles in the license plate as they're passing by. These are simply an investigative tool, one investigative tool that we can add to our toolbox that can help identify vehicles that may be involved in shootings and other crimes. These license plate readers can help provide information that witnesses and victims are, are either unable to provide, unwilling, or afraid to provide. That's what we're running into in this community for good reason. The ALPRs provide an opportunity to improve our countywide collaboration across jurisdictions to solve shootings and other crimes. They help remove human error and bias from vehicle identification. They're cost-effective compared to a lot of other tools out there and they can be strategically deployed. The APLR data is owned and protected by the city. And I believe that they can help disrupt the pattern of retaliatory shootings that is, as we've heard over and over again, traumatizing families and neighborhoods in recent years. The important component of this whole program is the policy governing their use. I fully understand the importance of protecting people's civil rights and safeguarding against abuse of the system. And every tool or many tools that we have in the city have use policies associated with them, and this is no different. Typically, when we're implementing a new tool, and I think back to the body cameras, um, further back to tasers, you know, you, you, you can move ahead with purchase and planning for implementation and development and uh getting the details of the policy finalized takes place in a parallel track so that you can end up, when you're ready for implementation, you have a finalized policy in place that governs their use. But in no cases, and we were ever proposing to implement this program without the policy in place. We just believe it's important to move in a parallel um track. And that's, um, that's, that's basically where we are at, at this point. So this um ordinance is related to obtaining funds to purchase these license plate readers. Thanks.
Okay, before we move, before we continue, I'd like to make a motion, or I don't know if I can make a motion. Would someone entertain making a motion to extend the meeting?
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion that we extend the meeting uh until ten forty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, James. Um, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Colossetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, um, um, Elizabeth?
Um, sure, I'll, I'll just hit a, a few um key points related to the budget amendment for this item. So first of all, because this is a budget amendment, it does require six of eight affirmative votes. So the, the mayor votes on this as well. Um, so this budget amendment would basically relocate unspent funds in the police department uniform line, line item from last year into this year's budget so that those funds are available for the automatic LPR system. Um, I do, I do want to mention that even if not um for this specific request, we would have been asking you to roll those funds forward at some point in any case. And, and I'll give you some very quick background. Some years ago, um, we, we cleaned up the, the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund and there were a number of very small expenditure items included there. Some of them were a few hundred dollars. And so in the process of determining, determining what should remain in the verf, which we ultimately decided was capital expenditures that are five thousand and over, those smaller items were moved into operating budgets with the understanding that we would essentially create a revolving fund. So after the end of, after the end of the fiscal year, we would rebudget that money into the following year. And the reason for that is that those um expenditures don't occur on necessarily regular schedule. We budgeted a, budgeted a level amount, but we know that they don't happen in even amounts um each fiscal year. So I just want to point out that's, that's kind of a um unique thing about the particular line item that we're asking to rebudget here. Um, but um I think that's all I need to say about the budget amendment.
Okey-dokey, um. Um, Chief Seraphin, did you want to say something?
Thank you, Sharice. I, I do have a, a couple of points. We, we brought this up a, a couple of weeks ago and I wanted to, um, and I wanted to refine some of the understanding because I've done it myself. And I had, uh, there, there was some discussion about where's the information and how's it all stored and what exactly is it? Um, and, and someone had, had told the story. I think this is interesting to help. It, it, as if someone was sitting alongside the road in a lawn chair with a notebook and just simply wrote date, time, and this plate went by. Date, time, and this plate, the next plate went, went by. And that person would call and make sure that wasn't flagged in Leeds is stolen or NCIC or Amber Alert or Silver Alert or not on the local hot list. And if it wasn't, that notebook would just sit there. And then um we have ultimately, if we had a shooting, we'd go back and we'd find the person with the notebook and say, hey, we're looking for something within, you know, an hour last night in between one and two AM. And I just say that because I think there was some confusion and I know that I was a hundred percent clear that there, the, um, the system does not check for Secretary of State records. So there's not names, driver's license information, registration information, those kinds of things. Um, and again, the proposed right now uh retention is, is thirty days for this particular system. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that a little bit. Um, I know there's some other questions that have come in with regards to FOIA. Um, I will just say that this is a new area um for FOIA law and for other um legal experts. Uh, matter of fact, FLOCK had two systems in twenty nineteen in Illinois and they're over forty now. And so as these, this area evolves, um, one of the things that, uh, so will some of these other issues. As of right now, it is staff's assessment that these items, this, this, the, the, the reports that we would get would not be subject to FOIA, that there are certain exemptions that would apply. I will also state that um the, that there's a, uh, the, we have even had some preliminary conversations trying to sort this out with the Public Access Counselor um and, and they have the Attorney General's Office. In addition, it's my understanding that there is a, some pending legislation now that's moving through with regards to um license plate readers generally. And within the, the state legislation on this topic is also some guidance with regards to the FOIA statute and, and not having that material be um disclosed. Um, and again, I'm checking a couple of quick notes because like I said, I know I had gotten some questions. Um, the, the, there was a question regarding other municipalities and access uh to those uh to, if you will, the notebooks, the, the information that exists. Um, and we can accept or deny other municipalities' access to our system. There is an audit trail. And so I'll jump um forward with regards now to just some basic policy points. Um, absolutely, the council can provide input, make sure that we understand what everybody's concerns are and make sure that we build a policy that satisfies those things. Um, clearly, number one, first and foremost, this information uh in the LPR system would be for law enforcement use only. Any misuse would be subject to discipline. Uh, we would have, there's certain training for this specific system as well as to make sure that there, there, there's leads certifications for those who would have access to this. The, the other thing that gets, I, I don't want to get lost in this, um, is that any information that would come in, if there was a hit, hey, there's a stolen car that just drove by, camera X. The officers must verify that it's the correct information. Is this plate, trying to correct for any maybe errors that would occur. They must verify before they take action. Um, another component of the policy would be documenting any action that they do take. So whether that's with a police report or perhaps a traffic citation or whatnot, those, those um actions will be documented. And again, we would have um an audit process. We're reviewing a couple of other different um policies that we've gotten a hold of and some do annual, some do quarterly. Um, and so we're trying to decipher the best way exactly to do that. We clearly, we could look at things like frequencies of, of, of plates and other whistle concern and, and FLOCK system has fields that can be sorted. So we could look and say, okay, well, who, what plate is being run? Or is there an officer that's doing um something that his, whose name shows up more? The other thing I wanted to uh also note is that, again, there's could be a difference between who just gets the notices in that, hey, a car drove by, camera X, as opposed to those who can enter or those who can search. And whether we refine those and, and scope it down to, okay, if you want to enter and search, it's just for supervisors or detectives. Uh, but we're not allowing um the entire department to be able to enter and search things. Um, and, and so th- those are the kinds of things that, that, that we're looking at. I know that, I think Mr. Evans even brought up something like what would be in, we saw a policy where um if they weren't gonna do city ordinance violations or, you know, slow level events, um, if you will, like uh no registration violation. So there's, there, there's work in progress as, as we're working through this. Um, those areas though are clearly ones that we want, uh, we want to be aware of. So um I guess I will let the conversation continue, but I know those are questions that we've gotten. Um, thank you, Sharice.
Mm-hmm. Um, we entertain a motion of sorts to at least get the topic on the, uh, for discussion on the table.
Sharice, I can make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I'll move that ordinance number twenty twenty-one zero nine zero four four. An ordinance revising the fiscal year twenty twenty-two annual budget amendment number three. Let's move to city council with no recommendation.
One second.
Okay, Mary Alice made the motion and James seconded it. Um, discussion. Mary Alice.
Um, I, I, I want to thank the chief and, and the mayor for giving some more context and background. Um, a lot of stuff that I've been thinking about in terms of these license plate readers, um, you covered. I do want to state that I spent quite a bit of time this weekend looking at various court cases in terms of these license plate readers, Maryland, Kansas, California, and so forth. Some of the things that came up in those court cases was the a, amount of license plate readers. Um, so the totality of the entire communities being covered, I think that that was a concern in Maryland. Um, and based on our conversation last week, I think that the estimate would be approximately twenty that would be in our community. Um, another thing that came up in Kansas was the automatic um flagging of a car and not requiring the police officer to validate that the number that they said was there was the car that they stopped. Um, so I would just kind of add that into a policy. Um, and then uh the other thing that I wanted to bring up, because we've talked a little bit about the ACLU and there's a big report, um, Jaya, thank you for sharing that with me. Um, and the, and the basic things that they talked about were the consistent monitoring, which we just talked about, what I just talked about with Maryland in terms of the pervasiveness of the cameras, um, the amount of time that we are keeping the data. Um, so there are apparently some uh communities that keep the data forever. Um, ACLU has a problem with that. Uh, so I think the proposal is for thirty days. Um, Rand also wrote a hundred and sixty-page report that I read this weekend. And the two things that they talked about again were the two uses for these cases. So there is reactive, right? And then there is um, there is analytic, like trying to stop crime. And I think that somebody in the public actually talked about that today. My understanding that this is more of a, a reactive state. So if some crime happens, then that gets put into the system as a hot list. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bryant, but, but I didn't think that we were using it for analytic purposes, trying to predict crime in different areas. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and so, so with that, I think we, we minimize a number of um cars that we're kind of tracking, so to speak, because those cars have already been identified as potentially um part of a crime that already, that just existed. Um, and then, you know, the second thing that the Rand talks about is basically uh a requirement to need to know. So the people who have access, which you talked about, um, are only the people in the department who need to know the information would have access to the system. Um, so those, I just wanted to share those thoughts.
Okay, James?
Yeah, I, I think the, while, while I'm supportive of us, of us moving forward with this, I think the important thing is that the, the policy uh get developed and shared. I appreciate asking for our input uh in that, in that so that we can um be comfortable that uh there's enough checks and balances to address any potential abuses. Uh, of course, limiting the scope of who can access the information is one major step towards um preventing, preventing abuse, but um, uh, there, you know, the review of who's using it and how often and understanding the justification for that is another really straightforward um model that we can implement uh to make sure it's, it's not abused. I, I think the disconnect between um the information that this system is going to be gathering and the Secretary of State um traffic information uh is, is an important um circuit breaker here so that, that, that don't get mixed and that um we're not uh saving names and, and other information associated with people who are just driving by. I, I think that's an important thing to maintain and something that we have to insist uh doesn't become a part of the, the tool going forward. Um, the, the, one of the values of doing this uh for a limited period of time is there's, there's not a front-end capital expense. So if we, if after a year, it's not working out, it's not um helping us in the way we thought it was. We, we can walk away and we don't, we're not leaving equipment or other things on the table. They have to come and take it is what I, what I understand. They would have to come and de-install it if, if um we didn't renew the contract for future, for future years. Is that, is that um correct?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you. So I, I'm supportive, but I do, I do think we have to have an active conversation going forward about these tools to um prevent abuse and, and to make sure definitely that we're seeing some kind of results out of this that uh justify the investment.
Okay, thank you, James. Uh, Jaya?
Uh, I, I want to note that I appreciate that we're thinking about how to do something quickly. Um, I know we're all very concerned about the gun violence in our community. And I'd mentioned last week that I'd started kind of reviewing what literature was available and I appreciate that some other council members asked to, to share those resources. Um, and, you know, Mary Alice has already shared some of what I found. Um, I will say that some of the biggest things that stood out to me were not only concerns about Fourth Amendment rights, which was a question that, that Shandra had asked when we had the presentation, but also questions about privacy and free speech and the ACLU talking about actually a chilling effect on those other rights for people. Um, and I want to make it clear that I, I did a pretty comprehensive review. I looked at reports that were very supportive of this technology, including from the International Association of Chiefs of Police. The Rand report, generally speaking, was very supportive. Um, I read another research study that was on board as well, but they noted that there was no statistical significance in the difference in crime rates that they found after implementing this technology. But one of the biggest things that I saw, no matter what source I was looking at, was a clear need for policies to be in place before thinking about implementing something like this. So while I hear that, you know, often things are done in tandem, this is still an investment. This is an investment of resources that we, we This is an investment of resources that we, we, we know we want to do something, right? With these funds to address gun violence, but we don't yet know if this is the right way to do it because none of us have seen even a draft proposal or of a policy, right? Even in the conversation tonight is, it could, right? It could say this. Could is not an answer. Uh, we need to know what is going to be in those policies before we can be asked to make a, a decision about this. Um, so like I said, just clearly saw over and over again, the need for clear policies, the potential for abuse is something that was cited. I'd mentioned this when we were first discussing this as well. Concerns about, um, tracking former partners, tracking activists. Um, there was a research study that looked at, um, Muslim folks who were being tracked, um, as they went to and from their mosques. So I'm not saying that these things are going to happen, but we need to know what policies are going to be in place to protect people before we can implement something like this. As much as we all want to move quickly to address the gun violence in our community.
Grace?
Thank you. Um, mine's along the same lines. I definitely agree with and understand the urgent need to address community violence. Um, as, you know, made very clear, these license plate readers will not prevent violent crimes. They will not prevent it. Um, no one is saying that. So I understand that we need to address the issue. Um, but I also, I want to see, uh, policy and more information and research before approving. Um, I think that, um, you know, I'm not necessarily against them. I think that they have a place and they could have some good advantages and some uses with the retaliatory stuff and solving some of the violent crimes. But I think that we need to know the policy, all the research and the safeguards that are going to be in place to prevent abuse or misuse of the system. Uh, the way I see it, if we approve this now, there will be no more input from the council and the public. Um, on its policy, the location, we don't even know where these are. There was a four-page report that we're going to use to, um, approve this, and that is just not enough information for me. Uh, we don't have information about how it will be reported, how we'll oversee that audited system. I think this is bare bones, uh, too rushed and we need more information. If we're working on this parallel track with purchasing and policy, um, why can't we put the policy first? Approval is pretty simple. It takes us one meeting, you know, a cow and then a council meeting to approve it. Um, the policy I imagine would take much longer. So if we're working in parallel, uh, why don't we have some more work on the policy first and then we can consider approving it? Um, because I don't believe that we'll have any more input or transparency if we approve this now. And we won't have the chance to have input on things like what the policy and location will be, uh, what kind of reports we'll have for the public and for council. And I think that we need a lot more things in place before we can address this important issue with this technology.
Okay, before I call on anyone else, I'd like to extend the meeting. Is, is anyone going to motion for that?
I'll move the, we extend it to eleven.
Second.
Okay. Um, um, clerk, could you please call the roll?
Can you please tell me who's second that?
It was, uh, Jaya.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Okay, um, mayor, I think you wanted to interject something?
Yeah, just, just, I wondered if the chief could clarify, um, a timeline. Um, you know, i- i- if this was approved next week for purchase, it, it's not like these, um, readers would be installed within a couple of days. It's going to take weeks of planning for the implementation, which is why that will give us time to also develop the policy and to continue to get input from, um, the community and from you. So, so this is not something that is going to happen overnight in terms of even implementing this. Maybe, maybe the chief has more information.
I, I don't know that I have a whole lot more, um, but yes, it would take weeks, um, for, for us to, to actually get in the queue. Um, and, and, and I, I understand the, 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 the policy concerns. As a matter of fact, we have, we have hammered out a very rough draft already, but I, I, I don't think it's, I don't think we've, I don't think we have gotten where we want to be yet with it. So, um, but, but, but I, I understand everyone's concerns. But yes, it would take weeks to try to even, once this gets moving, uh, before they, they won't be here, deliver and install on Thursday, no.
Okay, Chris?
Thank you. Um, thank you, chief, uh, for your comments tonight, uh, because it, uh, follows along and I, I appreciate, I, I really appreciate you, you being concerned about policy. Um, you know, we have to understand that this technology will not just affect the shooters or the criminals. It affects potentially everybody. Everybody's going to get their car photographed. Everybody's going to get their license plate recorded. Everybody's car and plate will be stored. And, you know, chief, I'm sorry, but you keep saying it's just, you know, yeah, Flock is not running it by the DMV, but your police department will. This plate, license plates yield names and addresses. You can't deny that. I have, you know, done some research as well, and I have, uh, got twenty things, twenty issues that I think need to be in a policy, in a written policy. And I think that before we can approve anything, the public needs to see what is our policy. So I'm not going to bore you with my list of twenty things that I think should be in the policy. But I will also go to the incredible meeting that we had September twentieth, where, you know, a digital surveillance company provides zero statistics regarding the effectiveness of this tool. We have no statistics regarding how many arrests could be attributed to these cameras. We have no statistics regarding the number of shooters that have been arrested because of these cameras. We have no statistics as to the reduction of shots fired in other cities that are experiencing, uh, that, uh, have, because of these cameras, have the shots fired, gone down, where cities have these cameras. We have nothing. We have two anecdotes, one in Ran Toa, one in Decatur. Uh, uh, you know, I found anecdotes in my research. In Colorado, uh, women and children were handcuffed face down on the concrete because the license plate reader thought their SUV was a stolen motorcycle out of state. Uh, in Vallejo, California, thirty-seven percent of their readings are misreads. So do I make a decision based on those anecdotes? We cannot do this on two anecdotes. So I'm asking, one, that the city provide a written policy that the public can look over first. And two, can Flock, uh, Safety provide some statistics? They've had three years in Illinois, forty cities. It's a digital program. Can they provide the statistics? Because the public is counting on this to work. You heard the public comment tonight. They think we're going to catch shooters. They think it's going to reduce the shootings. I'd like to see that information. And because of that, I'm going to motion that we table this until that information is provided.
Our second.
Second.
Actually, the correct motion would be to keep it in committee. Tabling it would kill it.
Oh, go, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to do that. Did not mean to do that. Uh, I would motion to keep it in committee.
So I already have a motion on the floor, Chris, but I am happy to change it. To keep it in the committee. I, and Phyllis, can you direct us on the proper procedure?
All you have to do is to resend the motion that you put through to have it sent to council without, uh, recommendation and then restate the motion to state that just to keep it in committee. That's all you have to do.
Do I need to have approval from the second?
Yes.
All right, so I will resend my motion, um, to send this on to city council with no recommendation and change my motion to keep this in committee. So I guess, James, I don't know if you agree with that or not.
Oh, I, I will agree to that.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
And now we're back to discussion again. Mary Alice, could you take the chair for a minute?
Yeah, but discussion's over, Chri, but I will take the chair if you want me to.
Okay.
Chair recognizes Chri.
Well, because we've got a new motion, a different motion, don't we?
We just voted on that one.
So my question is, isn't there a discussion then after that? After you move a second and take role?
Phyllis, can you help us out?
Well, generally you do your discussion before you take your final action. And when you voted on that to move it back into committee, you took your final action.
Okay, then that's okay. I can wait.
Can I, can I make a, a suggestion as current chair? That your, your comments could be during council input.
No, because I get way too much to say and I'm not going to be held to three minutes.
Okay, all right. Well, I relinquish the chair to Ms. Hersi.
Okay, so anyway, so we're done with that? Council input and communication. None?
I'm going to say something real quick.
Wait, Jaya, she had her hand up first.
So, um, I have a few things I wanted to, to share. One is, um, I, I would say that, that this process earlier today with the co-responder model, um, was not only frustrating, but I felt like was very inauthentic to what we had agreed on. Um, I think that there was a, I feel at least, that council members may were taken advantage of, of maybe not understanding the true impact of the way that ordinance was written. Um, was very disappointed to see that process move forward the way it did. Um, on a, a different note, um, I'm excited that on Wednesday we have the, the walk and roll to work, um, activities. So I'm looking forward to participating in that, um, and being involved in our community. I also want to highlight that as we're having these conversations about public safety, there was a really meaningful summit, um, about domestic violence and the increase of gun violence last week, um, where we heard some really, really meaningful speakers and many community members were involved in that conversation. And it's particularly timely because October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Um, so I want to make note of the fact that this is a time for us to realize just how many people in our communities are impacted by domestic violence. And those rates have increased during the pandemic. Um, and there is reason to believe that there is a connection between that fact, um, and the gun violence in our community as well. So I appreciate the speakers who spoke to that. Related to that, um, just for folks who might need it, our local domestic violer's, violence shelters hotline number, which is available twenty-four hours a day, is two one seven three eight four four three nine zero. And that's for Courage Connection, which provides, um, support services for survivors of all genders, um, who've experienced intimate partner violence, domestic violence, dating violence. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Mary Alice?
All right, I'll make mine very quickly. Um, I wanted to let Eddie Pratt Jr. know when he was talking about improvement of lighting, that I believe we have one million dollars set aside. And that is definitely something that is, uh, top of mind for people, is to ensure sidewalks and lighting in areas that haven't, don't have that infrastructure. Um, we're able to invest in those things. And then I also wanted to thank Colin, um, for providing input in terms of how we can make rental assistance better by, um, uh, having some, a person who's available to answer questions and to create an FAQ. So I, I will be making a phone call to make those suggestions to, um, our PC. That's it.
Okay, Grace?
Thank you. Um, I want to touch base on the comments about the eviction non-enforcement and, uh, would like some input, um, maybe in the next meeting about what we can do with that individually and even more so collectively about, uh, preventing some eviction enforcement, if that's something that the rest of the council would like to do collectively, um, and otherwise individually in the meantime. I agree with the, how the follow-up correspondent model was handled. Um, I think it needs approval on a public vote. Uh, it does feel a lot like breaking trust, um, when someone tells you that you approved something, when you're saying, you know, I, I thought, no, I didn't. I, I would be willing to, but, um, you know, under a, a structured way that was already agreed upon. Um, I also, last point was wondering when we're going to have the meeting about council priorities. We've talked about this weeks ago, months ago, um, there's been no movement on it. I was just wondering when or how we're supposed to schedule this. I would be willing to take initiative, but my understanding was that, um, that was not necessary. So I'd like some information about that too sometime. Thanks.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Um, Mayor Marlin?
Just a, just a correction. It's actually two million dollars is set aside in this year's budget for neighborhood infrastructure improvements, including, um, streetlights. And to the council priority setting session, we've been, um, reaching out to potential facilitators, have not yet, um, located a person who would be available to facilitate these sessions, but we are looking for, um, the facilitator for the council priority setting sessions. And if, and I would say if you, um, have, um, worked with people or have suggestions or experience with folks who have done this, please let me know and we'll reach out.
Shandra?
I just wanted to say to Grace that I would be, um, willing to, you know, collaborate, I guess, on this evictions thing or letter to the sheriff or whatever it needs to be. Um, I think, uh, uh, you know, a letter signed by the entire council could, would be good. That's all.
So is, if that's the end of council input and comment, um, with no other business before the city council, then, uh, we are adjourned. Good night.